But it's not safe.
Do you want to get another same model, though?
Um, I want another. I want something with those bells and whistles. I love my Jeep, I have to tell you. I stinkin' love that Jeep. I'm a little disappointed.
I love my car. It's got every option I want.
Every option I want.
What kind of car?
Maxima.
Twenty fifteen Limited. I have the heated seats, canorams.
Somebody get the door.
You know, heated steering wheel.
All right, we're gonna get going. Can you just quiet down, please?
I got the seat. I don't have the steering wheel. I'd like it.
Flintstone car.
Yeah, right.
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May, the, um, May, the May fourteenth zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who is the deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way, I have Mr. Jay Mancara, Mr. Jack Courier, Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who acts as our secretary, and I'm JP Boucher as your chairman of this board. We have some absent people tonight, and I'll explain what's gonna happen shortly with the members that are here. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript, audio tape, and video. We ask that you please direct all testimony into the microphone and only one person speak at a time. If you do not already have a copy of tonight's agenda, you'll find a copy in the back, so feel free to grab a copy if you'd like. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviations for the Nashua zoning code in form of applications for special exceptions and variances, and I'll explain both of those. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: one, the requested use must be listed in the table of use regulations as a special exception; the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian straights, uh, safety; the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, sewer system, or any other municipal system such as, such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled; and finally, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of variance are: one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any and all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. Tonight, we have four voting members. Unless a member recuses himself from a case, an upcoming case tonight on tonight's agenda, we'll cross that bridge when we get there and let you know what's gonna happen there. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the city of Nashua planning department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part of tonight's meeting is called a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case, and the order of testimony is as follows. The applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. And then the applicant then has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Please direct all testimony to this board and not anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they have to be directed to the board, and we will get them answered. Second part of tonight's meeting is called a public meeting, where the board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, please feel free to step out in the hallway. The acoustics are really good in this room, so we can hear everything that you say. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions before we get started? Okay, seeing none. I will call the first case. First case owner is Libin Kui and Yu Chang, twelve Chelsea Court. The description is Libin Kui and Yu Chang, owners of twelve Chelsea Court, shee be lot thirty seventy-nine, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash thirty-one A to encroach up to two and a quarter feet into the six-foot required yard setback to maintain an existing twelve-by-twenty shed. It's in the R eighteen zoning district. Is the applicant here? Come on up. And for the record, we ask that you give your name and address, please, and then tell us what you want.
We live in twelve Chelsea Court, Nashua. I'm here to apply for the variance for my shed. The shed was, uh, built in nineteen, uh, in, on September nineteen, two thousand fifteen, almost five years ago. Okay? So, at the time we, the shed was built, the size was twenty-twelve, was built by professional contract, Reed's Ferry Shed, and we paid six thousand dollars. At the time we signed it, put the deposit with the contract, that was, um, May, the five months early, four months early. So, we asked, so what's the requirement to build a shed? My house has point four-five eight. There's a huge, huge land. I said, what's the requirement? Say, the requirement is, number one, no brander, to make sure you put the shed in your property, within property line. Number two, need to have a solid foundation. Okay, so, we checked the property line and make sure, I said, do we have any other requirement? This is a requirement, and as long as you have a solid foundation, your neighbor does not have a problem, and you will have a shed, and as soon as it's ready, just within a day. So, to play on the safe side, we put the deposit on May, and I like to talk with all the neighbors, make sure they don't have a problem. If they have a concern, I will address the issue. Number one neighbor, because it's close to their borderline, okay? His name is Mark Monter, Monterrey, at sixteen Chelsea Court, okay? So, I talked with him, even with, it's the only, this is the only property this variance will have impact on his property, has no impact on anybody else, okay? It's, uh, at that time, I was not even aware, okay? Close to his board, so I talked with him, I say, I was planning to build a shed. Do you have a problem? And I show him where the shed is going to build. He said, no, no, I don't have a problem, I'm very easygoing, and I say, are you sure? Okay, here is the case, he is going to build a fence anywhere, okay? A few months later, he did build a fence, eighty-four inch fence, right after my shed, and also a lot of high trees, okay? And he just was talking with me, and it's kind of, this shed is kind of on his favor because he liked to build the fence anywhere, eighty-five inch high, okay? So, this is a neighbor, I talked with him, he did not have any problem, and another neighbor is Lynn, Lynn I, let me see his, her name. Okay, it's Lynn I Nuzo, at fourteen Chelsea Court. She is new, she just bought a house a few months earlier, okay? She was kind of strange why I need to talk with her to get her permission. I said, no, just...
Excuse me a second, you're just talking to the mic, if you don't mind?
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. You can move it if you want.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I say, I talk with you just out of courtesy, okay? So, okay, that's good. So, I talked with her, this is the location I...
You only have fifteen minutes.
Okay, I was going to the builder of the shed. He said, no, 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 I don't have a problem, okay? That's the second one. The third one, I feel there's a, there's a potential impact. It's Donna Cooper from, uh, Chelsea Court, ten Chelsea Court, okay? Donna Cooper and her husband, actually, I talked with them, husband, multiple times, and husband say, no problem, and we had a little bit more than discussion with Donna due to the misunderstood about where is the property, property line, okay? After we explained to her, and this is not an issue either, okay? That was on May two thousand fifteen, and four months later, it took me quite a while, a few months, to build the foundation, and in the meantime, if any neighbor has issue, we will address, address the issue, and no issue whatsoever. So, this was, uh, shed was built two thousand fifteen, on May two thousand fifteen, okay? And just recently, we find out, maybe the shed, and we checked the internet, and we feel maybe, uh, we need to get permission, uh, permit from the city hall. So, my wife and I came over here in the planning department, volunteer. Nobody asked us, nobody say, well, you cannot build a shed that way. So, we came over here on May, on March, March eighth, and talked with the planning department, and they say, well, it's, uh, it's good, you guys report the issue voluntarily, and we need to check the, we, we need to issue the permit. And they took the picture, they say, well, the only concern they have is with the neighbor property setback, distance could be too short, okay? It's require six feet, and maybe you are not, it's, it's, it's not within six feet, okay? It's within the, it's less than six feet, just ask us to measure. So, we measured, we measured as a three, three feet, three point three-quarter feet, but per your standard sheet, say, two and a quarter feet, and anyway, it's, it's not in line with country, I mean, building code, okay? So, we, that's why we asked for the variance, okay? In the meantime, we fill out the form regarding the safety, whatever, the how, the shed was in place for four years, and it's a solid sound, and this is professional contract, they, they warranty for thirty years, for thirty years. They use exactly building material, high-grade building material for the shed. At the same time, they use the same math founded from constructing of a home. So, it's a, it's a very, it's very safe, and this is a location farthest away from any neighbors, because it's not convenient for us. For us, it's, if we build a shed nearby, and we, we feel it will affect the view from, for the neighbors, and this, our neighbor has an open backyard seamlessly shared by four, five neighbors. So, for the sake of those nice view, and we kind of sacrifice for our convenience to build the shed farther away from any neighbors, and during the snow day, and we basically cannot go over there, there's too much snow, okay? So, any question, and I'm here to answer.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
You're all set for now.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we may call you back up.
And also, there's one more thing. If we have to... My wife is boss, okay? This was a mistake, basically, it's closer to, uh, it's not in line with the code, and on the other side, if we really follow the code and move away six feet, six feet, it will not benefit neighbor a door, and at the same time, you were closer to the front, front door, we're closer to the slope of the hill, slope of the hill, and the slope of the hill, front, you know, setback require twenty feet, twenty feet. So, that way, it would be very tough for, it would be kind, kind of tough to have a safe distance needed for riding long mover, okay? So, this is, in my opinion, is, is a win-win for everybody involved, at the same time, especially if we follow the, follow the rule, and you have to dismantle six thousand dollars, and it's a shade, and no benefit for the neighbors, at the same time, cause unnecessary hardship for the owner. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else, to be honest, that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Sir, if you don't mind, if you could sit down for a minute? I mean, if you can just take your things, if you, if, you might be back up, I don't know, so...
Okay, sure, sure. I'll leave over here.
Okay. So, there's nobody else in favor of this application that'd like to speak? Anybody with concerns, questions, or opposition to this application? Come on up, ma'am, give us your name and address.
Donna Cooper.
You're gonna come out to the mic, please, and just give us your name and address, please?
Yes.
And you can pull that mic down if you need to.
Donna Cooper, ten Chelsea Court.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, I wish I had fifteen minutes. I have five, right? So, I have to...
If you have five minutes.
Read through my notes as quickly as I can. Unfortunately, I disagree with Mr. Kui, I'm sorry, I, I, I disagree with what, of many things that he has said. Um, his, his property, his shed, as you know, encroaches into our six-foot setback, two-point-two-five feet, which, by the city's verbiage, is trespassing, 'cause it's private property. He feels that this shed is a benefit to everybody and does not affect anybody. The shed sits directly in back of my home, which was a private backyard. If you look at the plot of the two properties, his property has a very odd perimeter where the right end goes way out to the right, and he stuck the shed up there. You cannot see it from his driveway, but when you sit in my living room, it's what we look at. I realize that he was on his property, but he is in this six-foot setback, which I am protesting, mainly because if we decide our, sell our home, and we may, and I have spoken to a, a local realtor company, this could be a major issue with the future potential buyer. He's going to see this as, first of all, in his sight, he doesn't own it, and it's on his land, basically. It's not on the property, but it's in the setback. That, that would present a major issue for me if I were trying to sell the house. I am very concerned about this. I cannot agree with the variance. I feel bad for my neighbor for what he may or may not have to go through, but I believe if he had got a permit in the beginning, this would never have happened, 'cause he would have been told where to put it, the setback, et cetera, et cetera. I never said anything in the four years, you wonders why, because I was trying to be a friendly neighbor. I was very upset about it. Every time I look at it, I'm upset about it, 'cause I look at it, he doesn't. But I didn't do anything, 'cause I assumed I had no rights. I've since been informed that I do, because it is within our property rights. I know it would be a major undertaking for him to correct this, but he never discussed it in detail with us like he did Mark in the backyard, who did not care, because he has a fence that covers it, he can't even see it. So, of course, he wouldn't have a problem. I looked directly at it. Any, any potential buyer in the future, I think, would have an issue with it. Item four under your listings of the ZBA variance filing, and you mentioned it earlier, is the values surrounding properties cannot be diminished, and I truly believe this does diminish my private backyard. It's in my yard visually.
Sure.
And so, this is my big concern. I'm sorry that he did not communicate with us. He did mention to my husband one day, I'm gonna put a shed up, end of story. He never went in any detail with us where he was putting it. I came home one day to see men up in my backyard putting a shed in what I thought was my property. I asked them to stop, there must be a mistake, what were they doing? And they looked at me like, I, mind your business, miss, my neighbor was not present for me to talk to, and they continued to put it up. I, we didn't know what to do. We said nothing, because we assumed he was within his rights. He wasn't, and he didn't do it right from the beginning, and now it's becoming my headache, now and maybe in the future. I'm sorry about this, I didn't bring this on.
Okay. Um, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hold on, ma'am, just hold on for a minute, 'cause I wanna address your concerns, because I think that you're, you're obviously impacted like the, the other neighbors. So, we all take time to drive, and we look at the properties, right? And, um, the, your property is a very odd shape, and when I went by your property, it certainly appeared to me at first that the shed, you know, you would think that that was your property.
That's right.
And so, I had already looked at the, the GIS layout, which is the official layout of all the property lines of the city.
Uh-huh.
And I, you know, it's very clear that it has a very odd-shaped lot, and that, that big portion of its property is literally behind yours, right? So, as I looked at the shed and looked at the impact, the shed is completely on his property, and the, the incursion is really only affecting number sixteen Chelsea Court. There is no setback incursion to your property line, and I don't know if you realize that or understand that? Right, is this, do you have this?
All I have is the notice that was mailed to me that it was two-point-two-five into the setback.
Yeah, so, it's the rare, it's the, it's what we, it's what we could consider as the maybe rear, it's the rear of the shed. Only of the rear of the shed is incur, incur, incurring into the setback.
Uh-huh.
His, the setback.
It's not going into her setback at all.
Right, so, you're, you're, you, the setback to your property, which we could, let's just talk about, it's like the side, 'cause, 'cause your property line goes at an angle. So, the, the side of the shed, the side of the shed, the right side of his shed, would be what would be really the impact to your property, but that is nowhere near the setback of the property line.
So, please, maybe understand the notice I got that said it was two-point-two-five feet into my setback.
No, no, it's, it's...
It's his setback, not yours.
It's his setback. You, you, each property in the city of Nashua has a front, side, and rear setbacks, which means that there's, that, that, that area, you're not allowed to build, the idea is that you're not allowed to build or do anything there, okay? It's supposed to be open, the space is supposed to be left open, per se, okay? So, why this board is here is because not everything is perfect, right? So, we look at certain things, and I'm not talking about this case specifically, I'm just talking about the purpose of this board is to look at cases like this and other types of cases that don't follow the exact rules of the code book. But each property has what we call a front yard setback, side setback, and a rear setback. On his property, he is over the, the setback for the rear of the property, which is six feet. So, in this zone, in the zone that you live in, he could put the shed right up to the six-foot mark from the rear of his property. He could just move that shed, literally, he could move the shed up three feet this way, not be in your setback, on the side setback, and, and leave the shed right there, and he would be completely legal, he wouldn't even have to be here, okay? So, the shed could have been ultimately, unfortunately, I think, for you, I think, because you're looking at it, if that shed was moved up three feet, we wouldn't be sitting here today. That would be completely within code.
Okay.
All right, so, I just want you to understand, so, the two and a quarter setback is a violation, into the setbacks, a violation on his property, not your property, not nobody else's property.
So, are you telling me that it is not at all in my setback?
No, not at all.
So, it would not affect a sale of a future buyer, saying, wait a minute, that's not your shed, but it looks like it's on the property I'm gonna buy? It wouldn't, that would...
Right, and this is where, I think, where, when you have a layout of your property, and, and, you know, the, you know, if there was a survey done or whatever, where they know the property lines. The city of Nashua has what we call GIS, and if you look on there, that shed appears on the GIS map, and if you look out there, the, your property line, every, all the neighbors' property lines are all laid out, and the shed is clearly closest to number sixteen, but nowhere near incurred, incur, incurring onto the, close to your property line. It's close, but it's not at the point where he would be, have an incursion on the side So, so, again, if there was a property line dispute, if the shed was over the property line, I, we're not here to debate that. I, I'm sure that there would be an issue maybe somewhere down the road when somebody's starting to get a mortgage or whatever, or getting a property, but in this case here, his shed is, is completely and only on his property. He is just incurring into a, a code of a rear setback that he, he's over that area, and he's incurring into a setback on his property. So, he went too close, he's, he's in a little too close to the rear of his property that's allowed.
All right, so, it could, it would not affect my property if I were to try to sell it and somebody had an issue with that?
I'm not a professional, but I think that anybody here, I think, I, people would maybe agree that, I don't believe that there would be any issues. There, there is no issues, I don't...
Okay, and, and there's nothing I can do about the visual problem?
No, unfortunately, like I said, if he had moved the shed three feet this way, another foot and a half or two feet this way towards you, and not, not, not be over the side setback, that would be it right there. And, and again, we wouldn't be sitting here.
Okay, well, we were never addressed, he never showed us where he was gonna put it, we were shocked, and I still do not understand why he had to be so far from his house and directly behind mine.
Again, I, and like anything else, I think the property owners have the right to do what they feel they want to do with their property, within the limits.
Well, he didn't, and it was not in consideration of his neighbor.
Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am, but that's, you know, that's the explanation I can give you tonight.
Thank you for that.
Do you have any questions else for us? Any other questions?
Not at this moment.
Does, does anybody else have any questions for this?
Uh, no, I guess just a comment. I've always liked Chelsea Court. I don't go there that much, but I think it's a beautiful street. I'd love to live on it myself, and all the properties on it look very nice. I don't live far away, down the hill a bit, but I just wanted to say that, also, parrot what Mr. Boucher said, was I got your letter, 'cause that came in as an email, before the package actually came in, and I did my site walks early, and I thought, I would think, if I didn't know the situation, I would think that that's your shed. I would think that that's your shed because it's kind of behind your house.
Exactly.
But then when I see what the property line is, I said, "Oh, gosh, number 10 has a backyard of which goes like that, and the neighbor owns, you know, well behind your house." And I said, "I see what's going on there." And it is my thought that if I'm feeling like if the six-foot setback in the rear were adhered to, if he pulled the shed three feet forward, I think it would be more imposing on you and him. Just my thought because now it's closer. But I guess I was also parroting that the incursion into his setback is not on your side. It's on the back side.
Right.
So just a.
Right, well, we all know that the property boundaries are very unusual.
Yes.
And he took advantage of that little nook to put his shed in. And I felt my backyard was a beautiful private backyard. Chelsea Court, as you say, is a lovely street. And this has affected my property. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, ma'am. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or oppositions to this case? Seeing none, sir, you have an opportunity to come back for five minutes and rebuttal if you wish.
And by the way, I forgot to mention 16.
Excuse me, just your name and address again. Sorry for the record.
Leebin Q, 12 Chelsea Court. In response to the neighbor's concern about the property value, the setback distance, the only impact this could potentially have is 16 property. I just mentioned Mark. Mark sold the house two years ago. I just found out because my new neighbor saying, saying he stopped by from 16. He said, "What's going on with 16, 16 Chelsea Court? And what's going on for the hearing?" I show him what's going on and I said, "Do you have a problem?" He said, "No problem at all." And he did not come over here. He just asked me to pass a message. He is totally fine with the setback requirement. This could potentially has an impact on his property. And two years ago, Mark sold the house for $450,000. And assessed value for his property is $436,000. So there's no, at least for his property, there's no impact. And the location I have currently right now has the least impact for Donna. If for my convenience, if I build a house nearby my house, where I have block his view, her view for the window, this is least impact she can find. And at the same time, we also have a shed in the middle of the open yard. This was from, this from another neighborhood. And Donna can see 265 East Dunstable. There's a shed. It was built quite a few years ago. So when we build a shed, we really have a concern about the neighbors. And I built a foundation by myself because the slope is too steep from my side. So I use, I talked with, I talked with her husband and used her backyard, and it's kind of smooth. And for at least three weeks to transfer the sandstone, and they know what's going on. They know what's going on. If they have any concern, they will let me know. And we are very nice neighborhood. They are very nice, and we really, really considerate everybody's concern. Any question?
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks.
You're all set. Ma'am, per our rules, you have five minutes if you wish to come back and speak. Yes, ma'am?
I don't speak for my unit.
Okay. Come on up and just give your name and address again for the record.
Donna Cooper, 10 Chelsea Court. His neighbor behind him, who has had no problem with this, as I repeated, and I'm repeating myself again, shouldn't. He has a fence so high he can't see the shed. So of course he doesn't have a problem. That's a whole different circumstance for what I am dealing with. And he did not discuss with us in detail what he was doing. We did see what was going on when it started. We assumed it was, he had the permission to do it. We had no rights to say anything. We were not happy, but we felt he was doing what he was told he was permitted to do. That is the only reason we didn't say anything then. I didn't think we had any recourse at all. Thank you.
Thank you. All set. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Curry.
I, you know, I concur with the abutter that it looks like it's in her backyard because it's more behind the, you know, number 10. But it's clearly Mr. Chu's property, and he has the right to put a shed anywhere but six feet to the property line. And that's why he's here because it's less than six feet to the back property line. I think if we were to vote no, I think it would be a worse situation because the shed would be pulled forward. And certainly if the shed were completely moved to the left, I think that would, you know, make the neighbor happier. But that's not what is under consideration. Under consideration tonight is just the six feet in the back. And I'm supportive of leaving the shed where it is because I think it's a better situation to be pushed back like that versus brought up three feet or two and three-quarter feet forward. So I'm in support of the application for as it's proposed.
I'd also agree with you. I think the property is such a unique shape. And, you know, I think we're also dealing with the fact that there is such a slope going up, you know, and I understand the issues with the view. But it's clearly, you know, obviously on, most of it's on his property. And I agree with you. I think pulling it forward, you know, may not look any different, but I think would just be more, be more coming towards, you know, that the house is there. So, I mean, I agree with you, and I would support the application as it stands.
I would agree also, again, noting that it is an unusually shaped lot. I think the purpose of the setback requirement is to minimize impact to abutters. And I think in this case, complying with the setback and pulling it forward would actually increase the impact to abutters. The shed itself, I think, is reasonable. Reasonable use of the property, I think, was reasonably done. So I would support the application.
I too support the application for all the comments that have been made.
Make a motion? Yes, please. Thank you.
I'll make a motion on behalf of Leeben Chu and Yu Chang. The address is 12 Chelsea Court. And again, the request is to encroach up to two, two feet, 2.25 feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback to maintain an existing 12-by-20 shed. I believe the board finds this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And the special conditions that we've talked about is as these properties go around the bend, so to speak, of Chelsea Court, the properties are kind of long and angled. In this case, it's angled to the right side quite a bit and goes, you know, well behind number 10. And I think the board finds that the applicant has the right to put it on his property. And I think we're fine that it's okay to encroach 2.25 feet into the six-foot rear yard setback. And I'm just clarifying rear yard, not side yard setback. I think to allow this encroachment is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, which is, again, the six-foot setback is to, in respect to the neighbors. But the neighbor that it's encroaching has no issue with it. And so we think it helps out the properties on this side, you might say, of Chelsea Court. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, particularly if it's pulled forward. If anything, it would impact the two properties in front more. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served to allow this 2.25-foot encroachment into the rear yard setback.
Is that seconded by anybody?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. McCarran, discussion. It may not matter, Mr. Curry, just a fact, maybe, you know, you said that the neighbor supported the shed. I think the neighbor sold.
It was 16.
In 2015, at the time it was built, I think, supported that. But obviously, the neighbor is no longer there. It sold the house. Just in case, you know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you want to.
Thanks for clarifying. Yeah, so I'd say the former neighbor, when this was built at 16 Chelsea Court, was, did not have an issue with it being closer to the property line than six feet. I mean, being not, being okay to be 2.25 feet closer to the property line than the six-foot.
Mr. McCarron, do you second that again?
I do.
Okay. All those in favor of this application? That's four to nothing. Congratulations. Your application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Have a good evening. With that, I'll close case number one, and I'll open case number two. Case number two is Whitman Family Revocable Trust. Applicant is Patricia Whitman. Address is 46 Broad Street. Description: Whitman Family Revocable Trust Owner Patricia Whitman. Applicant: 460 Broad Street, Sheet F, Lot 968. Requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3. Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'll repeat, exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached garage with accessory in-law dwelling unit above. It's in the I-9 zone of New District. Welcome, and can we have your name and address, please?
So my name is Patricia Whitman. I'm here with my husband, Jack Whitman, and we reside at 460 Broad Street. And as stated, we come before the board to request a special exception to build an attached garage with a second-floor in-law apartment. My 90-year-old father will be moving up from New Jersey to New Hampshire in August. And our desire is to be able to set him up in his own apartment where he can live independently, but at the same time, enable us to care for him and to afford him companionship. So, I mean, that's my story in a nutshell.
Any questions?
Yeah, I guess maybe throw a question at Mr. Falk first. And that is, one of the requirements is there's no new front door. I think with this proposal, I didn't know if you were saying, like in the breezeway, I guess I call it, there's a door. Is that not considered new because there's currently a door on the side of the house, which is the entrance from the driveway? I didn't know what you thought about that or.
I mean, we wouldn't really count that as a, as a front door to the unit. In fact, I have a house exactly like this, exact same thing. And it's not a, it's just, we just call it a side door. But when you go in that breezeway, it actually has an entryway that can go into the garage or it can go into the, you know, the new unit. So it's not really an exclusive front door. It doesn't have the look and feel of a separate front door, like to a separate unit. I mean, it looks like a breezeway to us. And most breezeways do have a front and or back door.
That was the only question I had, so I'm all set.
And Mr. Falk, did, yeah, and you know, it's right square footage as well below the 750, so there's not a problem there.
It met all the dimensional and other issues that we saw.
Do you want to go through the requirements with it?
Yes, I will. Any other questions before I do that? Ma'am, there are some special requirements for this, and I'm just going to go through those just to make sure. Are you aware of the accessory dwelling unit requirements?
To a degree. I have my contractor here tonight. Can he speak to that, those questions?
Yeah, so I'm just going to read through them. All you need to do is agree.
Okay.
I'm not going to force you, but if you want to come up. But I just need somebody to, you know, that's representing you or yourself agree to that. So let me just start going through those. This is the accessory dwelling units, special conditions. Number one, this accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in an extent used and purpose of the primary structure and does not exceed 750 square feet.
Yes.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling.
Yes.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. No new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling should be constructed on the front or frondage side of the single-family dwelling unit. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed. And the exterior design of the accessory, of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building forms, scale, and construction materials.
Yes.
The owner of the property must occupy either the primary accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
Yes.
The owner of the property shall provide the City of Nashville with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds along with the appropriate filing fees. The covenant, there's an excerpt of the covenant here.
Yes.
It's just following the code. She said yes on that one. One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house.
He won't be driving, so we're good.
But you have plenty of parking space.
We do, yes.
An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes.
A single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
Yes.
And finally, the accessory dwelling unit shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA 674 colon 31.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant? You're all set for now. Does anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
Okay, I'll just kick it off. I say I think this is really well done. I think this is, from my view, precisely what I think of when I think of an accessory dwelling unit. It fits into the neighborhood well. I think it looks as though it's a natural addition to the property. It could be an accessory dwelling unit. It could simply be an expansion of the home. So nicely done, and I support the application.
I feel the same way. The only thing that caught my attention was that breezeway door. But, you know, I also noted when I site walked it there, you know, the primary door to me going in and out of the house is on the, that side of the house that faces the driveway. And so if you build, you know, an attached garage to it, you want to move that, obviously, to the front or the back. But I just wanted to make sure that wasn't defined as a new entrance in the front. And I don't believe it to be either. But we've had some issues with that with other applications. So I'm fully in support of this. I agree with what Mr. McCarron says. I think it meets all the criteria and blends right in. And, you know, is a single-family home. So I'm good with it.
That's okay.
I too am good with it. I like that it does meet all the criteria. And, yeah, that breezeway door, it didn't affect me the same way. And so I'm completely in favor of this application. Well done. People are be commended, taking in their family.
I'll also support this application. As Mr. McCarron said, it's very well done. Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Curry?
I make a motion on behalf of the Whitman Family Revocable Trust. The applicant is Patricia Whitman. And again, the address is 460 Broad Street. The request before us tonight is a request from Table Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3. And the request is to construct an attached garage with accessory in-law dwelling unit above. It is listed in the table of uses. I think by testimony, the board finds that this one accessory dwelling unit will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. There'll be, I think, the board finds no impact of water, public water drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The eight, nine accessory dwelling unit special regulations are fulfilled by testimony. And I think the board finds that this proposed addition will be, not be out of character, but be in character of the neighborhood and will not be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Seconded by Mr. McKay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, excuse me.
There's one, actually, point, I just, I appreciate the contractor being here with the applicant, because then they hear the same thing, because sometimes we've had issues where something gets built differently than what was before us. So I appreciate the contractor being here as well.
Still seconding that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Support or nothing? Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Four to nothing, motion passes, congratulations. Just be aware, again, I'm highly unlikely, but there is a thirty-day window of appeal, so just be aware of that as you get the project going. If you have any questions, please talk to Mr. Falk. Thank you very much for coming. With that, I'll close case number, number two. Before we start again, I just want to remind those who came in a little late that I asked if there's any conversations or anything, if you could take it out in the hallway. Unfortunately, even the whispering, we can hear everything up here. This auditorium is excellent for acoustics, so we just appreciate that as we get going. Thank you very much. With that, I'll open case number three. Case number three is Monica, I apologize if I pronounce this incorrectly, Monica Uch and Amanda Kong. Applicant is Gibraltar Pools, one oh-three Lund Road. Monica Uch and Amanda Kong. Owners Gibraltar Pools Corporation. Applicant, one oh-three Lund Road. Sheet B, Lot twenty-seven fifty-three, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash two sixty-four, for accessory use area forty percent allowed, fifty-one percent proposed, to construct a sixteen by twenty-four-foot above-ground swimming pool. It's in the R-nine zoning district. Welcome, have your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jay Henchall, Gibraltar Pools, Topsfield, Mass., representing the owners.
You can lift the microphone up if you'd like.
Yeah. Here we go. All right. Well, we're requesting relief, obviously, to build an above-ground pool. We exceed the allowed amount of the yard by forty, by eleven percent. We're allowed forty percent by code. The, we comply with all other zoning codes, building codes, barrier restrictions, all of that stuff. The only thing is we can't comply with, we've reduced the size of the pool from the original pool, we reduced the size of the pool to bring it down to a smaller package, but we do exceed it by eleven percent. The pool is an above-ground pool. The, we do feel we meet all the criteria for variance, and if the, the basement in this house is heated, but it's not finished at this point, there is intentions eventually to finish the basement, but at this time it remains unfinished, which ironically, if it was finished now, we wouldn't be here, because we would meet the allowed area. Really, that's all there is to it.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward. Anybody else that'd like to come up and speak in favor, or any questions with this, for this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Curia?
Well, we've seen situations like this before, you know, a request of fifty-one percent over forty percent. I mean, the reason the forty percent is there is to balance the open space with the land. It's a decent-sized property with kind of a small house on it, and as the contractor mentions, not all of the house is finished. And when you look at what's proposed, it doesn't look overly out of proportion, in my opinion, you know, the pool. So, yes, it's eleven percent over, but I think that it's, it's worthy of a variance because it's not burdensome on the property, it doesn't seem to be a problem to the abutters, we haven't heard anything tonight. So I'm, I'm good with as it's proposed. I think it meets the five criteria.
I would also agree with you, and furthermore, I don't even know if you're gonna see the pool from the street, really. It's really kinda back there, you know, so, you know, with the way the lots are situated there, and so I'm in support of the application. Anyone else?
I'm in support of it.
Yeah, I would also support the application, and just would note, you know, a backyard pool is a normal and reasonable use in a residential area. Because it's an above-ground pool, it is effectively temporary in nature, it could be readily removed if it needed to be, but also, when you, when you look at the property, the lot itself, it's actually much smaller than the lots that are typical in this area. Behind it appears to be a large lot, I'm assuming it's conservation land. So when you look at the purpose of the area requirement, which is to minimize lot coverage, in effect, you're still maintaining a huge amount of open space. Really, the lot coverage would be much less if that lot actually had extended to the rear, so that, that does make the property distinct from the surrounding properties in the area.
May I make a motion? Why don't you make a motion?
I'll go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Curia.
Yep, I'll make a motion on behalf of Monica Uch and Amanda Kong, and again, the applicant is Gibraltar Pools, and it, the address is one oh-three Lund Road, and the request before us tonight is from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash two sixty-four. The accessory use area is forty percent is permitted in the R-nine district. The request tonight is for fifty-one percent, and that's for a sixteen by twenty-four-foot above-ground pool. I believe the board finds this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the board has identified the special conditions are that the lot is a bit smaller than the surrounding lots, and the house is a bit smaller than the surrounding, for this size property, and given that, what would be kind of a typical size above-ground pool quickly pushes this eleven percent over the forty percent allowed. I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow this overage. I think the board finds it'll not have any impact on the property values of surrounding parcels. It will not be contrary to public interest and substantial justice is allowed, would be served to this homeowner by allowing fifty-one percent accessory use area. Again, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Mancara. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's four to nothing. Motion is approved. Congratulations. Thank you. With that, I'll close case number three, and open case number four. Case number four, owner Fabreze Corporation. Applicant is the U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts. Address is four seventy-six Amherst Street. Description: Fabreze Corporation owner, U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts. The applicant, four seventy-six Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot one sixteen, requesting use variance from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, number eighty-one, to allow the use of twenty-five percent of the site for leasing slash renting of trucks, where seventy-five percent of the site will be used for permitted use of self-storage. It's in the Park Industrial MU Zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Gottesman and Hollis in Nashua, thirty-nine East Pearl Street. With your permission, I just have a couple of brief exhibits to hand out, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
I represent the applicant this evening, which is U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts. Also here this evening is a representative of the owner, David, Attorney David Roznick. He's here in the audience. If you have any questions of the owner, the owner of the property is Fabreze Corporation, which has been the owner for quite some time, but they're no longer an occupant of the existing structure on the property. To orient the board and the public, the property is identified as four seventy-six Amherst Street, which, the front lot is Lot one sixteen, MAP H. There are actually two lots on this property. The back, the rear lot is identified as Lot twenty-three. Lot twenty-three and one sixteen are to be combined, and this application has to do with a combination of those lots and uses on those two lots. Development which is proposed is a U-Haul leasing, truck leasing operation that you're all familiar with, U-Haul renting the cars, vans, trailers, et cetera, excuse me, and a self-storage facility. The zoning is Park Industrial, and also the new mixed-use overlay within the Park Industrial Zone. The majority of the use which is proposed is to be the self-storage facility, and that is a permitted use in the Park Industrial. The proposed use of the existing building and the front lot, which, the front portion of the lot, is for a truck and van leasing U-Haul facility, like, as I say, everyone is fairly familiar with. The use category is permitted by conditional use with a superscript one, which is, it's permitted only if the other seventy-five percent is in the industrial and manufacturing category. This is where the story gets a little complicated, and that's why I brought a little hand out. I'm just gonna identify the site on the board. This is the site, Amherst Street.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, they ask you for the microphone. I apologize.
That's okay. Acura Automobile Dealership is directly to the west, as you were heading out. So if you're coming in from west, you're gonna see the Acura sign, the dealership, and then you'll see the Fabreze Building, which anybody who's been around a while recognizes is a longtime manufacturing facility, no longer in use. It's a one-story building of nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty square feet. It will stay, and that would be the use of the U-Haul. To the rear would be a two-story building with the self-storage unit, which is permitted. Due to the sizes of the buildings, seventy-five percent of the use of the property would be a permitted use, and the twenty-five percent is the use of a truck rental. To the rear of the property are the railroad tracks. It's about a hundred and, close to a hundred and eighty feet frontage of the property, but it's a very deep lot, as you can see by the plan. If you turn to tab one on the book, tab one talks about the general purposes of the industrial district, and that's under PI, industrial areas that, for the most part, abut the major turnpike interchanges and are adjacent to residential zones. The PI district provides locations for light industry and industrial parks. This district implements the master plan recommendations to provide adequate zoning for industrial park-type development. If you turn to the second page, I've highlighted number four, which is, commercial use is designated with superscript one, are permitted only as part of the site plan at which at least seventy-five percent of the gross floor area is reserved for uses listed in the industrial and manufacturing category. If you turn behind tab two, unfortunately, automobile and truck rental use, which is listed as twenty-nine, it's also one under eighty, both times they're listed as C superscript one. What C superscript one means is, it's a conditional use which could be approved by the planning board, however, it must be connected with a use in the industrial or manufacturing category. If you go behind three, there's a whole list of industrial and manufacturing uses, however, when you go to the third page, you will see that self-storage facility drops into the rare category with very few uses entitled warehousing and storage uses, which would seem to be fitting, that is, it's permitted in the Park Industrial, but because it's not in the industrial and manufacturing category of uses, the superscript does not apply. So we need a variance, and the variance can either be for the use, or it can be a variance from the requirement that it be attached to industrial and manufacturing. Either way, what I would suggest, if you feel inclined to vote, you make a condition of approval that it must be no more than twenty-five percent of the total usage, and it must be connected to the self-storage, that is, must be part of the use with seventy-five percent self-storage. That's what we're presenting, that's our whole case, our argument, and we're not asking that you give a variance to allow automobile truck leasing throughout the entire site, just the twenty-five percent maximum use. With that explanation, I'm just gonna attach, give maybe perhaps one more minute of description. This all started with a visit with the planning staff. My client hired me as an attorney to go through the land use, to meet with the staff, hired Heiner Swanson, who's also here this evening, went through the code, looked at everything. We all thought we had it right, that a conditional use would allow this use. We then went to the planning board, in a rare move, to ask for a conditional use permit without a site plan. My client just wanted to know, will you allow this use? The planning board took it up. Planning board discussed the nine conditions of conditional use, one of which is, the building or structure will not materially endanger public health or safety. Another is, the building structure use will not substantially devalue a budding property. Another one is, the building or use will be compatible with the neighborhood and adjoining and abutting uses. Those all sound familiar to you as a zoning board, 'cause it's the same criteria. And just so you'll know, it's pretty rare, in my forty years of practice, I've had a chance to have the zoning, a planning board comment before the zoning board. But they did, they voted it, and they approved it as a conditional use. Lo and behold, we all found out afterwards that the proper interpretation is, this doesn't work that way, because it's not an industrial or manufacturing use, which is the companion seventy-five percent use. So we're here before you, asking for your relief. I'm gonna touch on the criteria very quickly. As to the five points, the first point is, won't be contrary to the public interest. While the use isn't permitted, it is only twenty-five percent that we're asking for. The other seventy-five percent is a twenty-five, is a permitted use. It will not alter the character of the neighborhood, and I say, the first indication is that the planning board, with their view of the neighborhood, their view of planning requirements, and what they think is existing, took a look at the property, took a look at the abutting uses, and didn't feel that it would alter the character, and in fact, determined it is compatible with the neighborhood. The second consideration is, just consider what's out there. The property itself is adjacent to a dealership, which also involves leasing of automobiles. Across the street is a automobile truck, I mean, a tire repair facility. There is a Dunkin' Donuts, there is another facility which sold sandwiches, which is out of business, but it'll probably be a similar type replacement. And then adjacent to that is the industrial park, which is what Park Industrial is owned for, but that has its own entry road, and it has very large lots. It will not threaten public health, safety, or welfare. It has public water and sewer. It has adequate frontage to allow a turn-in and turn-out. As you know, Amherst Street is a divided roadway, so there isn't any cross-traffic going on. And its past use involved trucks, obviously, delivering and picking up manufactured parts and equipment and supplies. Number two, will observe the spirit and ordinance, spirit of the ordinance. As I say, this is Park Industrial Zone with a mixed-use overlay. The master plan recommends that the purpose of the industrial zone is to allow the industrial uses, a reasonable amount of space for heavy industrial users, and to encourage attractive landscape and sensitively-sited industrial development that is compatible with surrounding land uses. I'm not sure you could get much better compatible uses than a self-storage facility in the back, which looks like an industrial building, but will have very little traffic. And in the front, an existing structure which is going to remain, and it will have some cars and trucks parked up front, just like its neighbor, Acura. Maximum, as I say, twenty-five percent for leasing and trades. It's interesting to note that there are, among permitted uses, would be the sale and leasing of heavy equipment. That could go on in that building. Trucks can't be, and I assume that's due to either perhaps an oversight in the drafting, but more likely just to try to keep compatible uses. We're in an industrial zone, let's have industrial uses, and this may fall closer to the commercial. But I think we have a property that is closer to the commercial activity. As I said before, it won't alter the character because of the surrounding uses and what's proposed, and it won't threaten the health, safety, or welfare of the public. Substantial justice will be done. The use category, while it may seem on its face to be more commercial, if you've visited a U-Haul, it is probably not commercial in nature as much as it is bordering on the industrial. You've got trucks coming and going, you've got some installation of, of trailer hitches, you've got trailers in the front area. So this is, in my opinion, closer to the industrial, and I think that if it were granted, there would be no harm to the public in any way. So when you do the balance test, if you deny it, this, this unusual combination of uses, which seems to be working so well for U-Haul, would not be allowed. If you deny it, there's really no gain to the public, somebody's gonna have to look for another Somebody's going to have to look for another use on that site. It has been on the market for some time. This seems like a proper use of property. It will not diminish the values. If granted, I believe you all have a report from J. Chat Rogers LLC. Mr. Rogers opined that he viewed the property, photographed it, attached photographs to his report, analyzed the surrounding properties and identified their uses as commercial, and said that the only butter that could be impacted by the variance is the Acura dealership, and it would have very little impact on them as the property is on their dark side. No other butters will notice any difference as there are tree buffers on the east rear of the property, and this is a very busy street with a variety of commercial uses in close proximity. I opine that the proposed variance will not materially alter the character of the neighborhood and will not adversely impact values of nearby properties. And finally, we get to the last argument, which is the hardship argument. What makes the property unique is it's one of the few existing manufacturing sites up and down that Amherst Street that we're all familiar with. Fabreze was a manufacturer. Unfortunately, it's not a good site for manufacturing as we know it today. Those manufacturing sites are not in this area, not of this shape or size. It is not really large enough for a typical industrial and manufacturing park. That is what Park Industrial is designed for. It is not particularly suitable for much else other than what's out there. It is not the narrowest lot, but is the second narrowest lot. Acura is the narrowest lot. What's the use of Acura? A retail commercial use. So we think we have a pretty unique site, given the surrounding properties and within the district. Given its uniqueness and the uniqueness of the use as proposed of seventy-five percent permitted warehousing and twenty-five percent truck-van leasing, the restriction prohibiting the truck-van leasing does not serve the purpose of essentially preserving the industrial land for industrial and manufacturing use. And that is the purpose of linking the twenty-five percent to the seventy-five percent of industrial and manufacturing. It does not serve it in a fair and reasonable way. The proposed use is reasonable. So really, the restriction that we're asking to be varied from is requiring that the seventy-five percent use be industrial and manufacturing. That is really the core of the request. The proposed use, seventy-five percent is permitted, but it's not industrial and manufacturing. The twenty-five percent would normally be allowed if we had a use under that manufacturing. I think the way the board can solve it, as I said, is if you feel we've met the criteria of the variance request, you could grant it condition upon that it be not to exceed twenty-five percent of the total use and that it be coupled in use with the proposed self-storage warehouse. And thirdly, that the lots be merged. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Attorney. So with your suggestion, thank you very much, what does that do to any future use of this property? Or what's a potential impact, let's say, that U-Haul decides to move out? What are we left with? Are we, are we in good shape, or are we open to some other things?
No, that's why I suggested the coupling of those three requirements. You've only permitted that this evening with that use variance. When I was reading it over and thinking about it, I realized that someone might read into this, well, we granted the variance to allow truck leasing, and the whole site could become truck leasing. And so I felt it was important to have you stipulate twenty-five percent. If, if U-Haul were to move out, it would, either you could tear everything down and start over with a permitted use under PI. You could tear down the U-Haul part and expand the leasing to be a hundred percent of the use. Any use that's permitted in the PI could be permitted there. But you could not expand the twenty-five percent, nor could you have twenty-five percent with another use unless you came back here.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir, come on up. Attorney Hollis, if you may, move out of the way. See name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is David Raznick. I'm an attorney in Boston at Cohen, Raznick, Myers &amp; Plout. We're at One State Street in downtown Boston. I represent, as brother counsel mentioned, and I appreciate his acknowledgement, I represent Fabreze. Fabreze has owned the subject property at 476 Amherst Street for almost seventy years. Nineteen fifty-two, I believe they brought the front parcel. My predecessor in representation of Fabreze, and my mentor, represented Fabreze when they were incorporated in nineteen forty-eight. And the son of the original incorporator, the son being Gordon Riblet, has run the business since his father retired from the business to the age of ninety. And they like to regale me with stories of what Amherst Street looked like when they bought the property in nineteen fifty-two. I won't go into that history. But just very quickly, I think their position is that they were there for a long time. They were delighted to be here in Nashua. But their business has changed. Amherst Street has changed dramatically. And I think the bottom line is they believe that awkward things must come to an end. So they've had their run. They are continuing to run their business out of a different location. But this location no longer is, shall we say, the highest and best use of the property. And they concur fully with U-Haul and my brother counsel's recitation of the proposed use of the property. And we are in full support.
Any questions? Thank you, sir, for coming. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody who questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
For all the reasons in the written application and for what both attorneys said, particularly Attorney Hollis, I think it meets all the criteria. I'm in favor of it. I've driven by that countless times. But this past weekend, I sat in the parking lot a little bit. And as Attorney Hollis says, you look around, and the proposed use, to me, looks more in line with the surrounding uses than, you know, the traditional Fabreze industrial use. I feel, I appreciate Attorney Hollis's suggestion to tie the twenty-five and seventy-five percent together. I think it's prudent to do that. So I'm in favor of it. I'd like to have that stipulation added in, but would support it without it even.
Yeah, just adding to that, it's, I think this is an unusual case. I've struggled with what the reasons were. What was the spirit behind making the link between these C1 types of uses, limiting them to twenty-five percent, where the dominant use is a permitted use? So it's, it's a very nuanced, I guess, result that brings them here in the first place. I think otherwise the use is reasonable for the site. I have no problem with it. I have no problem, you know, capping the self, I'm sorry, the truck leasing use at twenty-five percent. I'm not sure, I care about linking it to the self-storage necessarily because if the seventy-five percent of the site were to go to a use that actually is in the industrial manufacturing use, that would be fine from my perspective. But I leave that to the maker of the motion.
I agree. You know, I'm good with Attorney Hollis's suggestion. And, okay, without it, it's, Amherst Street has changed, and it's a viable use for the property. So I'm in complete agreement with it.
I would also agree. I think, I think it's important to tie both together. I think, I think the case was made that, that, that something could happen there that we're not really planning for, or bigger use. So right now, I would rather, I would feel more comfortable with that stipulation cited in that. So otherwise, I'm full support of the application. Want to make the motion, Mr. Curry? You seem like you know exactly what you're going to, how you're going to word that. But thank you.
The owner, making a motion on behalf of the owner, Fabreze Corp. Again, the address is 476 Amherst Street. And again, the request before us is a use variance to allow twenty-five percent of the site for leasing renting of trucks, where seventy-five percent of the site will be used for a permitted use of self-storage, but not for manufacturing purposes. So I believe the board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which again before us is a U-Haul facility for seventy-five percent, I mean, a storage area of seventy-five percent and then a truck leasing of twenty-five percent. So I'll make a special condition that the twenty-five percent maximum use of the leasing of renting of trucks is tied to the seventy-five percent use, which the board finds that it is in this case, which is the self, which is self-storage unit. So obviously, the trucks would be used in connection with those self-storage units or the renting of those trucks. I think the board finds that this request is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow the renting of trucks on twenty-five percent. I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance because that use, the proposed use of the leasing renting of trucks is very uncommon with other commercial uses in this part of Amherst Street. Think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. Think the board suspects it might improve property values of surrounding parcels to have a viable business here that brings more customers into this, into town. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest to allow this use variance, and that substantial justice for the property owner is served. So I make a motion to approve with the stipulation.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? That motion passes. Congratulations. Motion passes. With that, I'll close case number four and open case number five. Case number five is for Anya E. Bent, Fieldstone Land Consultants, 24 Coburn Ave. Description is Anya E. Bent, trustee, Anya E. Bent, Revocable Trust Owner, Fieldstone Land Consultants, applicant, 24 Coburn Ave, Sheet F, Lot 71. Requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, for an existing lot, Sheet F, Lot 71, minimum lot width, one hundred and twenty feet required, one hundred feet proposed. And two, for a proposed lot, Sheet F, Lot 71-1, minimum lot width, one hundred and twenty feet required, one hundred feet proposed. Both requests to subdivide one lot into two lots, and that's in the R-18 zoning district. Welcome. Name and address, please.
Carl Foley, Fieldstone Land Consultants, 206 Elm Street. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the zoning board. I'm here this evening with Mr. Bent. And what we have here is a piece of property on Coburn Ave, number 24.
Sir, if you'd just grab the mic.
Grab the mic.
Thank you very much.
The piece of property currently has thirty, thirty-nine, I have it written down here, thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet, point nine one acres. We did a survey back in February of the main parcel, F-71, 24 Coburn, and we did locate the existing improvements on the lot. With regards to the zoning itself, it is zoned R-18, which requires lot size of eighteen thousand feet, road frontage of a hundred feet, and the setbacks twenty on the side in front and forty in the rear. The lot itself, the frontage here along Coburn Ave is two hundred feet. And what we're proposing is a new lot, F-71-1, with the requirement of the hundred-foot frontage would be met. The size of the lot would be nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven square feet. And the other existing lot with the house on it would be nineteen thousand six hundred and eleven square feet. We're asking for relief for the lot width, for the lot, each of the lots, and the setback with regards to the existing house and the garage. With regards to the five points, I think the board does have copies of the variance criteria. And if I, may I, I'd like to just read through that?
Yes.
So granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because granting this variance would be similar to the allowed use in, in the use of District R-9, which I believe you have a copy of. And I'll put it up on the board so others can see. Our lot is located here in the green. This is zone R-18. This is zone R-9. R-9 has nine thousand square feet for lot size and seventy-five feet of frontage. So continuing with the, the, not contrary to public interest, the parcel is removed approximately, like I said, about a hundred and seventy feet from our parcel. Additionally, the existing parcels surrounding the site contain single-family homes, which are similar and compatible in size to our proposal. For these reasons, we believe this proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Therefore, granting this variance would not be contrary to public interest. Number two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because granting this variance would allow for a productive use of an existing larger lot as compared to some surrounding parcels along Coburn Ave, Hampton Drive, Belfast Street, and Frost Drive. The zoning district for the property is R-18, which has a lot size of eighteen thousand square feet and a hundred feet of frontage for single-family homes. The existing area of the parcel is thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet, as mentioned, with two hundred feet of frontage. We believe that this property does possess, possess conditions that distinguish it from other properties in the area, in which the location of the existing house allows for the proposed lot to conform to the dimensional requirements of lot size, building setback, and frontage. This is the proposed new lot. The project would also increase the city tax base, allow reasonable use of the property, and have no measurable negative impacts to the public. This proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. For all these reasons, we believe that granting this variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance. Number three, granting this, granting the variance would do substantial justice because granting this variance would allow the landowner reasonable use of the property, especially since no, no lot area or frontage or variance are being requested for the proposed new lot. Only a modest variance for lot width on each of the lot and a side setback for the existing garage. The existing and proposed new lot would be consistent with other parcels in the area. This variance would do substantial justice because it would allow for the productive use of the property while providing responsible growth in the community. We believe that a denial of this variance request would be an injustice to the applicant as there would be no apparent gain to the general public. Number four, granting the variance would not diminish value of surrounding properties because this proposal consists of a proposed single-family residential lot. The use is consistent with the zoning and have, will have no negative impacts on the surrounding properties. In fact, many of the adjacent properties just to the southeast and along Coburn Ave Avenue are located in District 9, in which the proposed new lot would meet the dimensional requirements, and only a side setback variance would be necessary. Therefore, we do not believe that this proposal would have any negative impact on the surrounding properties. Our experience has been that new home construction, similar to what is proposed, will typically have a positive impact on surrounding properties. Unnecessary, excuse me, hardship. The zoning board, or the zoning exhibit as shown, identifies the unique features of the property. The existing structures and lot improvements are located along the southerly property line, which is right here. The existing house encroaches into both the front and side setbacks. Should say, the house and garage, both the front and side setbacks. The lot size of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet is larger than the number of nearby lots and exceeds the eighteen thousand square feet required to subdivide. The newly, the new, two newly created lots will have or exceed nineteen thousand square feet of area and will meet frontage requirements. All infrastructure is in place and adequate. This proposal is consistent with the surroundings and therefore will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. character of the neighborhood. To require literal enforcement of the ordinance will not provide any gain to the public or the neighbors. It would restrict the applicant's ability to develop the property in harmony with the surroundings, resulting in unnecessary hardship. And we do understand that if this is granted, we would have to go before the planning board and get planning board approval if, if the variances are granted.
Okay, if you don't mind, just, I'm gonna, just for us, right, because I had a question, Mr. Falk, and ask Mr. Falk to clarify something. You mentioned, and I was questioning, Mr. Falk, as you had mentioned an additional, an additional variance, but there is none, it's just for the frontage, and you mentioned something about the garage and the house, and I just wanna, Mr. Falk, just to explain what, what we're actually looking at.
Sure. The house is encroaching a little bit into the front yard setback, just a very little sliver of it, but, but that's not really anything that requires a variance because it's an existing condition and the act of the subdivision is not impacting the front setback of the house, so that's okay. As far as the garage goes, if it was, if it was attached to the house, it would have to meet the entire yard setbacks, but since it's detached, it only has to meet the 20-foot front, which it does, or six feet on the side, which I, I scaled it off, it looks like it's about eight feet or so.
It's six feet.
Oh, it is six feet, okay. It looks like, it looks close, but it looks like it does meet the, the setback, so.
So it's the lot width we're looking at?
Just the lot width on both the two lots, right.
Required 120 feet.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only two.
So, so the reason why I brought this up was because if you were looking for more and if that's what actually would have to happen, it probably wasn't advertised correctly or you weren't seeking the right, the right, the right relief. So I just wanted to clarify that with Mr. Falk, so I know that, that was part of your presentation, but I just now, you know, with the clarification and to understand that we're, we're only looking at lot, lot with, the way it was advertised was advertised correctly, so we're only talking about the lot.
My babbling about the side setbacks, that really is striking, striking, striking from the record. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm sorry to interrupt, do you have, do you have anything more for us?
Any questions, I'd entertain.
Any questions, the applicant?
I was just curious on the, what, what I would call, say, the undeveloped lot, it looks like it goes downhill, is that like a kettle hole, or is that, is that drained to the back, could there be a lot of fill?
No, well, we're looking at the lot, again, that'd be a planning process with grading it out, driveway, the whole nine yards. We did have a soil scientist and wetland scientist look at the lot itself, and there was no wetlands determined on the lot itself. It's just that the way the lot, yeah, it does go down in the back and lays a little bit low, but that would all be, you know, graded out through the planning process.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And I believe, only because I'm familiar with the area, that neighborhood has open space area, so your, that lot, there's open space behind there.
It does, it bumps.
And there's actually on either side of Frost Ave, there's open space, I don't know how far it goes, but I know there's open space in that neighborhood, so.
I think there was an, an open space subdivision that was approved a while back, right behind the property, adjacent to the property.
There is a, there is a strip back there that runs there, so. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody have, would like to come up and speak in favor of this application, anybody? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition with this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
Jay, you want to kick it off?
Sure. I, I struggle a bit with this one and what makes it, what makes the property distinct. You know, overall, no problem with the application itself, it seems reasonable that it, you know, clearly meets the density requirements, exceeds the density requirements, the minimum requirements for the area, meets the frontage requirements. Granted, there's a slight incursion of the existing home in the front setback, but it, you know, otherwise, the setback requirements would be met. I have to imagine that the minimum width requirements exist so that we can make sure that lots are reasonably proportioned and that you can, in fact, cite a home on it and cite the kind of typical other accessory structures that are, are common in a residential area. From the looks of the lots, that would be the case. So, you know, the one area, I guess, where I struggled a bit is kind of what, what, what does set it apart, it's large, not unusually so for the neighborhood, so that's kind of the one area I, I could use a little help on, but otherwise, I think it's reasonable. I've got no problems with it, there doesn't appear to be any opposition, I don't think it would negatively impact property value, so seems reasonable. Help me out.
Well, when I was walking, not walking or walking by the site, not on the site, you know, I was wondering how did this end up, the size the way it is and where the house the way it is, and really, the topography is what caught my attention, because I, I think in days of old, it probably was not worth it to fill or grade like that proposed new lot, and it would have taken more energy, it probably just wasn't worth it at the time, and that's why somebody carved out a big piece of land that's just, you know, filled in with trees. Time goes by, and here we are today, and it's, you know, I think, an attractive economic, economically to develop it. I, I feel that while, you know, 100 is 20 feet, you know, less than 100 and, 120, I, to me, I didn't think it would look any different than the lots on the other side of the street or around it, it would look in kind with the others. And so if you were looking for something unusual, to me, that this topography is challenged on this, I would call it challenged on the proposed lot, but if, if the applicant gets permission from this board and others, and, you know, my, my sense is, for them, it's probably a profitable thing to develop it, but I think that's why it ended up shaped the way it is, and they see an opportunity to do it. I don't feel it, it's, uh, out of character with the neighborhood to deny it, so I'm, 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 I'm willing to support it.
I concur. I too am willing to support it. I think the topography is what causes the issue, that's why we have lots, even in my neighborhood, that are pie slices. They're just really odd shapes, I think, based on what they had to work with. And if 19,000 square feet seems reasonable to me per lot, it's not a small lot, and so I am in favor of this.
I also too, I'm familiar with this neighborhood, my sister lived there for, for a while, and I've traveled up and down, and I, I always recognized this lot, and then I saw this variance, I go, wow, we're actually gonna put something there, and then this came in front of us. You know, I think as I look around, you know, you're, you're right, there's properties of different sizes, anywhere from 100 feet of frontage to 168, and then, and then, yeah, but I think, so I think it's really mixed, but I think what's, again, important to me is, you know, again, I know that, not that time is always the answer, but things have changed, I, I think, you know, Mr. Curry is right, I mean, I think today, you know, methods are probably easier to come by, the way they clear lots and be able to do things, and I think it's feasible for them, and so, and, and again, looking at it, maybe, I don't know if, not knowing what the frontage is, I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't go by and say, boy, this is really gonna look narrow, because I looked at the two other new houses that were put in, two properties over, right, the, the two newer houses, those are 100, 100 feet frontage, and don't really look out of place, other than they're like brand-new, but it doesn't look like they're, they were put on top of each other, so, and, and the lot size is there, so, so that's kind of how I'm looking at, so, so I'm gonna support this application.
Any other discussion? Mr. McCarr, are you, okay?
I'm good.
All right, I'll make a motion. Make a, make a motion for owner Anya E. Bent, Fieldstone Land Consultants, 24 Coburn Ave. Anya E. Bent, trustee, Anya E. Bent Revocable Trust Owner, Fieldstone Land Consultants, applicant, 24 Coburn Ave, Sheet F, Lot 71. Requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, for an existing lot, Sheet F Lot 71, minimum lot width, 120 feet required, 100 feet proposed. And two, for proposed lot, Sheet F Lot 71-1, minimum lot width, 120 feet required, 100 feet proposed. Both requests to subdivide one lot into two lots in the R-18 zoning district. We believe that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible to the, for the applicant to pursue other than a variance. Special conditions of the property is, it is a, one of the larger-sized pieces of property in that section of Coburn Ave. There is properties that are in varying frontage widths from, in general, from about 150, 150, 100 feet to 168 feet, and the lot size is very large and deep, so the, it will exceed slightly over the minimum lot size. It does meet all other criteria for the lot, the lot, except for the frontage. We believe that is within spirit and intent of the ordinance, will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, we have no testimony for or against that. We believe it is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. Seconded by Mr. Curry, any discussion? All those in favor? That's four to nothing, congratulations, sir, motion passes. Just a reminder, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Thank you very much for coming. With that, I'll close case number five. We will take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come, we'll come back, so a five-minute recess. So a five minute recess. We're going to come back into session. All right, folks. Call case number six. Open case number six. Owner is Shahid and Neelo Farh Haak. Applicant is Neelo Farh Haak, Six Hibiscus Way. Requesting a special exemption from land use code section one eighty dash forty-seven B for a major home occupation for an in-home daycare for up to nine children. It's in zoning district R nine.
You can pull that down.
F U O D.
There you go.
Thank you.
Flexible use overlay district.
So F U O D is flexible use overlay district. That's what that stands for. Do you have your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Neelo Farh Haak and I'm from Six Hibiscus, Nashua. And I'm requesting for a special exception for using my property for home daycare.
So my name is Shahid Haak.
Speaking on your microphone, sir?
I'm Shahid Haak. I'm her husband. And my address is also Six Hibiscus Way in Nashua, New Hampshire. And we are requesting for exception to land court for home occupation by operating daycare business from the home for children.
Okay, so we got your application. So could you just tell us, I know what you're asking for. Tell us that you're asking for a specific number of, of, of children. So just talk to us about that number and what else you're doing, you know, for this. You can just speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
As of state of Concord, like childcare licensing unit, they allowed now nine children as under one provider. And I am the only provider, will be the only provider, and I have to have known more than six, nine childrens at my home. And if it's exceeding nine children, then I have to have another provider. So that's what I'm requesting for.
So the children that you have, are they any of your children or are they just the people that are bringing children?
All the other, other people's children. My children's are, are out of state. They are in college level, so they don't stay home. They just come for, visit.
Is there anything else you'd like to ask or would you like us?
No, just if any question, anybody has any question concerned?
Yeah, we were advised, we were assigned a counselor, so she advised us. We are both new at this, so as I go, I learn, I was advised by the counselor to file for an approval. The first thing to do is to get approval from the zoning planning department and then they approve it, then we can take it on there. So, so I'm open to questions if you have any.
Mr. Cari.
Just wanted to point out, if you didn't already remember, there's six criteria you might want to walk through. It might be beneficial.
Yeah, I was going to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I will. And you know right that, so I, I was, that's why I was asking the number of children, because you know what? Up to three children, you wouldn't have to come in front of us for that, but you're requesting specifically nine children. Okay, okay. Are you aware of the six childcare facilities, special conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to go through those and I, I'm gonna just look for a response from you. The child daycare facility shall be subordinate to a single-family detached dwelling.
Yes.
The maximum capacity of a child daycare facility shall be twelve children. A child daycare facility providing care for six or more children shall be located on a lot that conforms to the minimum dimensional standards for the applicable zoning district established in section one eighty dash sixteen dimensional regulations of this chapter.
Yes.
And Mr. Falk is, from the city's perspective, is saying, yes, it absolutely does fit the dimensional criteria. There is no, there is onsite parking for the principal residential use. Outdoor activity areas for child daycare facilities shall not be located in the front yard and shall be enclosed by a solid fence made of wood or other suitable material not less than six feet in height, which shall be erected and maintained in good condition around the outdoor activity area.
Yes.
So, right now you don't have that, but I'm sure you're waiting for.
Approval after that.
Approval to go forward that, but you will have to put up a fence.
Correct.
No signs shall be permitted except for a name plate not exceed, not exceeding one square foot in size and attached flat to the main structure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Mr. McCarron.
Just a couple. Have you previously or are you currently operating a childcare facility?
No, this is the first time I'm operating.
And if I could ask, what are the age ranges?
Age ranges will be between from infant to seven, seven years for the grade second or third grade. From infant to second to third grade.
Another question is, obviously with something like this, there's always concerns from Butters or neighbors. What do you foresee or what, what do you see for people coming in? What times do you see that happening? What can, what can one expect from, from what you're asking for?
So the timeframe will be from seven to five, five-thirty. And I, I, say it again.
So when they come to your home, right?
Yes.
You will be, where would they be parking?
They, I have a driveway which, which takes like four, four, five parkings I have in my driveway. They will use my driveway to use, for parking, for picking and dropping. And then I have some space on, in front of my house.
Okay.
Which will not block anybody's driveway or anybody's area.
Okay, and, and, okay.
So our driveway is large enough that it can handle, sorry.
So you need a microphone, I'm sorry, just a microphone.
The driveway can handle up to four large vehicles, so they don't even have to park on the street. They can park in my driveway. And I don't think, they'll just come over, drop the child and pick it up, so they're not going to park there for too long.
All right, so, so you're, you're pretty much saying that you'll ask, you would be asking your clients to park in the driveway or in the front of your home?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We might have you back up, but thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Come on up, sir. Just name and address and, yeah, crank that up.
Hi, my name is, excuse me, my name is Andrew Broder. I live at Eight Hibiscus Way with my family. I'm here to respectfully make my opposition known. We got a mailer indicating that our neighbor wanted to open a nine-child daycare and that immediately raised two basic questions when you look at the code, specifically the additional traffic that eighteen car trips a day would entail when they have nine children. I would state that while this, while the neighborhood is quiet, there's a bus stop two houses down from theirs where, you know, kids, elementary school and middle school kids catch the bus. So during the prime drop-off hours in the morning, there're going to be, you know, lots of additional neighborhood kids up and down the street that, you know, would have to watch out for the additional traffic. The, the way that side of the street is structured is that we all have retaining walls that hold our driveway. My neighbors have two retaining walls on each side, which makes backing in and out of the driveway, I know I have one, it makes it more challenging to see children or other cars that are coming up and down the street. So I would think that that would add to the pedestrians, go to the pedestrian's safety. In addition, lawn care services are a big trafficker, I guess, in our neighborhood. Most mornings and most evenings, you'll see lawn care trucks parked in the street, which would take up, in some cases, both sides of the street, which would narrow, which narrows the amount of car traffic that's allowed through the street. So the additional cars coming to and from, from the daycare would be, you know, just additional hazards that all of us in the neighborhood have to avoid. And then I would say that one of the criteria is kind of the, is the integrity and the character of the neighborhood. And I would say two things. There aren't any other home-based businesses of this type in Maplewood that I'm aware of or that I've, and I've done some of the research to look around. So I think that in itself lends itself to be something completely out of character. And the covenants that were on the property when they were, when they were built, twice referenced the fact that they can only be used for residential purposes. So I think that that's another indication that, you know, when the houses were built and, and sold, that they were only to be, for, to be used for residences only. And I'll say one last thing. In speaking to Mr. Falk, I think in addition to my opposition, several of my neighbors have also indicated their opposition, including one who came to my home tonight from, from Seven Hibiscus Way. I believe they, he and others have provided emails questioning or noting their opposition to this as well.
Any questions? So, just as a daycare facility, with three or less, right, they wouldn't have to be here. They could do what they want. Would, would that be an issue with, with you as you look at it or is that still kind of an issue in general for you?
I mean, personally, I don't want to live next to a daycare of, of any size, but if it's, if the, if the land use says that they can have a in-home daycare with three children, I guess I would have to live with that, but it's not my, it's not something I would look forward to. I think, I think it would, in some cases, be detrimental to the value of my home if I were to turn around and sell it. Compared, you know, there are many homes in my neighborhood, in our neighborhood, that look very similar, if not identical. If it's a question between next, of my home being sold next to a daycare versus not, some people may choose to live, you know, further away in the neighborhood in the exact same house. So I think that's, that would be my opposition there, but if, if it's three, then it's three.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else with questions, concerns, or oppositions to that, this application? Come on up. Give us your name and address, please.
Kashmira Patel on Four Hibiscus Way.
You can bring that down and if you could just talk on the mic a little bit more so we can hear you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Kashmira Patel, Four Hibiscus Way.
What's the address again?
Four Hibiscus Way.
Four, okay, thank you.
I guess like our neighbor, fellow neighbor said there, my concern is the traffic involvement. Me being a parent of two, a little over being toddlers, I've had kids in a daycare facility and I've, I've seen where parents are rushing to be in and out of daycares and like it was said, the retaining walls, the backing up. My kids are playing in the front yard. I would be a little concerned. And just in general, it's an issue, not that it's a concern here, but we do have neighbors who just do not follow speed limits, right? And to that you add eighteen more cars coming in and out. I mean, I know that's the max capacity. It's not going to happen overnight. It'll happen over time, but traffic movement of cars is definitely one of my concerns.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none. Before I go on, we have three.
I think you all have a copy of them.
You all have copies, but I'll read these in. Three communications regarding this case. One is from Dan Hunt of Ten Hibiscus Way. He writes, these are emails received by the city planning department. I oppose the, I oppose that Six Hibiscus Way, Nashua, receive permission to be granted daycare license. The traffic and extra cars in the neighborhood is not permitted. We have a daycare located down the street. Please consider this. Thanks again, Dan Hunt. Second communication from Kapil Dabi. Hope all is well. I am the owner of Eleven Hibiscus Way, Nashua, New Hampshire. I recently got a letter from Nashua Planning Department regarding our neighbor, the Hakes at High, Six Hibiscus, application for a special exception to open a nine-child in-home daycare. As one of their neighbors, I would like to oppose this for a variety of reasons. I am currently traveling for work and would not be in town, so sending my opposition via this email. There is a meeting of the zoning board on five fourteen to hear this request, which I can, I can't attend, but would like my views to be presented. I oppose the request to open a daycare for a variety of reasons. This is a neighborhood which is family-friendly and not a commercial business neighborhood. This exception will further promote others to do the same. One exception sets the benchmark for others. This doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood. This will further increase the traffic in the neighborhood and will create unsafe conditions for other kids in the community. I'm very concerned about that. This commercial business will also decrease the value of our homes and, and community in general as people move to this community for non-business nature of the community. I strongly oppose any opening of the daycare near the vicinity of my home of Eleven Hibiscus Way. I can be reached at a phone number for further conversation. Thank you for listening and helping maintain our neighborhood. Best regards, Kapil. Okay, that, that was it for communications. So there is no other people that want to speak in, with question, concerns, or opposition to the case? Seeing none. Ms., Mr. Hake, you have an opportunity to come back to, to speak for, for five minutes, if you'd like, on what you heard the opposition talk about and anything else you want to add.
Yeah, it's been recently, you know that.
I'm sorry, just give your name again.
Yeah, my name is Shahid Haak and I live at Six Hibiscus Way in Nashua. So we are a family of four and we had four cars going in and out of the driveway on daily basis. It's the last year or so when my daughter, she graduated and she's not, you know, she went, moved out of the home. And now my younger daughter has moved out, so last year or couple of years, you know, we have been, like two cars coming in and out, but before that, we've been living there for a long time and it's the same. I do recognize that we have walls on both sides of my driveway, but those four cars going in and out, it hasn't caused any problems to the neighborhood. And I do realize the, the opening a daycare center there is going to help a lot of parents who are struggling with their infants and small childrens as they match, as they play around with their time that they have to spend at the job. So I would appreciate an approval.
Sir, there was some comments made about the traffic in the neighborhood and I don't know if you could comment for us on what you observe for, you know, the traffic and, and the busyness of the part of the street that you live on? If you could just comment on what you observe or what you believe is there.
So the traffic, my, you know, the timing is like from seven AM to five-thirty, depending on what timings of the parents. I can't say that they will all be there at the same time in the morning or, or they're all believing at the same time in the evening. So they might come at different times and may not affect the traffic that much.
Okay.
And the street is wide enough, plus, you know, it's, we observe the speed limits and everything over there. Yes, it's enforced.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Do you have anything else that you want to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sir, you were the only one in opposition. There was two in opposition. One of you have the opportunity to come back and speak if you'd like. So if you want to take a few minutes and discuss that, let me know. If not, if you know. All right, looks like a decision was made. All right, so you'll, you'll have five minutes to speak. If you just your name and address again, if you don't mind.
Andrew Broder at Eight Hibiscus Way. I, I would say, and I'm not sure if, if this is allowed, but this is an email that my neighbor at Seven Hibiscus Way wrote to Mr. Falk. I don't know if he didn't receive it, but I didn't hear it referenced when you guys were speaking earlier. So I can hand it to you or you can.
Yeah, you can, you can hand it. We'll take that in. That was sent at five-twenty-two today, right? So that's why.
Okay, that's why, okay. Well, he, and he came to my door, he must have been right after he, he sent that, so.
You're already in, you're already in the.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we can't introduce that, but thank you for that.
Certainly.
It'll be part of the record, but I can't introduce it at this point.
Fair enough. That was the only thing I wanted to, to mention.
You can speak to that if you want to say.
Okay, so I had a discussion with my neighbor, Mark, from Seven Hibiscus Way this evening. He also indicated his opposition to, to the nine-child daycare proposed here tonight for basically the same reasons that we've all been discussing, which is the increased traffic on the street, the number of cars in and out of the driveway and, and realistically having to park on the street. In addition to the idea that, and it was actually Mark who brought me a copy of the covenant, the idea that the neighborhood was designed to be a residential neighborhood and not, not support a commercial venture of this nature. So I think that's, that's all I wanted to, to, to point out.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Maplewood is a flexible use overlay district R nine. Do you know what the square footage? I think all of these lots are less than R nine. And if you don't know that, that's fine, but while you're there, if you don't know, I'll ask Mr. Falk to clarify that. He's the man. Do you know what your lot size is? Because yours, I mean, you look down your street, they're all like the same.
I want to say we're less than a quarter, like maybe a two-tenths of a, an acre.
Okay.
Off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Mr. Clark's doing a calculation right now. Dimensions are on the drawing.
Oh, oh, okay.
Lots like just under twelve thousand square feet.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're all set?
I'm all set, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean the whole.
Thank you very much.
I think the minimum might be nine thousand, though. They're over the minimum anyway, so.
Yeah. All right, I think it was eighteen thousand that, you know, half acre lots and with the flexible use overlay, they could go down to a quarter acre. And then in, in response to that, there was open space left behind.
Good.
So thank you for helping me remember that.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public committee. Go ahead.
If I'll kick it off, I, I have to say I'm, I'm struggling with this application for a couple of reasons. In general, my impression of Maplewood is what we've heard, I think, from the applicant and the Butters. It's generally a quiet place other than cutting lawns. I oddly enough commute through. I oddly enough commute through here all the time to work on my bike. And it's very quiet. I love this neighborhood. New Searls Road is very busy. Searls Road is worse. Then you go over Coldbrook and it's nice and quiet, pretty much all the way to Gilson Road. And my impression of this neighborhood is it's quite quiet like that. And my suspicion is that if nine person daycare was operating, it would be very noticeable. There's been a daycare operating near my house. And regrettably, I have to work for a living. So I'm out of my house pretty much before sunlight and back late. But on those snow days, for example, where I'll work from home, I'm surprised at the activity, and that's from about four or five children. Because when a car stops, you know, there's voices, there's car doors closing. If two people are at the same time, there's conversations going on, the normal things that happen. And I think to myself, wow, like if I worked the night shift and I wanted to sleep through the morning or the afternoon, that would, that would be burdensome to me. So when I hear the abutters talking about the added activity of nine, I feel that that's the case. And I, you know, and I don't know, this board has seen a lot of these applications and probably approved almost every one. But all of those that I've sat on, I mean, I'm thinking of other ones we've approved, like on Kinsley Street and others. It's, you know, there's never been kind of a universal concerns of the abutters about the noise activity. And I didn't think there would be because the neighborhood is just more active, but not this one. So I'm struggling with it. I, but I'm open to be persuaded otherwise.
I'll jump in because I struggle as well. When I, when I look at the special conditions, the criteria that needs to be met, you know, I kind of go down the list. Is it subordinate? Yes, clearly the maximum is less than twelve, et cetera. So I do feel they meet it. I feel they meet these conditions. And I do hear the concerns of the abutters. And the two areas where I really zoom in on is undue traffic congestion. What's undue? Well, to your example earlier, if you are on Kinsley Street or if you're on a major street, the amount of traffic that you're adding to a street with a lot of traffic for something like this is really minimal and de minimis. So is it undue? Nine, probably not. In the context of a smaller residential street, could the addition of the eighteen or whatever, would that be a significant different activity? If I'm imagining what's happening in the morning with a pickup drop-off on a quiet residential street, that's a lot more activity than one would normally have. Character of the neighborhood, something else that I would look at is there, I mean, clearly this is a use that the ordinance contemplated. The ordinance has special exception criteria for a reason. We imagine that home daycare is a reasonable use and we imagine it's a necessary use. Would it be out of character? I think potentially, yeah. So what I'm focused on, I think, is really the number. It's not so much the use, it's the number. And I, where my mind is going is I would be inclined to consider approving an application or the application with perhaps fewer children where the impact would be less. That's kind of where my mind is going, but I am struggling with it, so.
I'm gonna echo Mr. Mancara, actually. I struggle, but I would have an easier time with less children. My conundrum here, in one of the letters, it states, "We have a daycare located down the street." I'm assuming Ten Hibiscus has a daycare because that's what they say. So if they have a daycare and I look and I see that Mr. Broder is at eight, Ten has a daycare and now, you know, Six wants a daycare, I'm a sandwich. I'm the Oreo. I'm in between two daycares. So now I look at that and say, okay, that's more impactful rather than less impactful. But if there is a daycare, then that begins to color the comments about it's not in the neighborhood.
If I could jump in, I took that statement about a daycare in the neighborhood as being a commercial one over by Captain's Corner. So when this Maplewood went in, that business district and the businesses that were there, like the Captain's Corner in particular, the pizza, I think there was a Chinese food place there for a while, but that was to service this part of town or this community. And as I recall, I think it's still an ongoing concern, but there's a pretty darn big daycare that's at that. You know, as the crow flies, it's not very far. It's maybe a quarter mile away. I mean, I think you have to go out to Conant Road to get down there or walk along the path. But that's what I think that's in reference to. I don't think there's other ones in homes that I know of.
So that would be located down the street?
No, it would be, well, it would.
Because his words are down the street.
Well, to me, it's so close, it's down the street, but there's a commercial zone down the street. And that's what I interpreted that to be. I mean, I interpret that diametrically opposed to you in the sense that I didn't see it as there's one on Hibiscus Way, but there's one in the neighborhood that's convenient for these parents who need care in this neighborhood to go to very close by. So again, I just interpret that completely opposite as you do. And I interpret that, again, that statement as, why do we need it at a home here on the street when there's one right down the street that's a going concern?
And, you know, that's probably why we all drive different cars and different colors. We, perception is everything. But still and all, regardless, if it's down the street, if it's here, it's located in the area, I'm still on the fence about should we, shouldn't we? But I do think nine is too high. I mean, it's a residential neighborhood. And lawn care vehicles, that I, in my own mind, eliminated because that's a property owner's preference as opposed to cutting their own lawn. So I can't penalize somebody for the, you know, ease of somebody else. It doesn't make sense. We have them up and down our street, too. There's some who do their own, there's some who have people, lawn care come in. So that's where I am. I'm, like Mr. Mancara, I struggle, like yourself, I struggle. But if it was a lesser capacity, I would be inclined to support.
I'm also struggling with the number. I don't have a problem with the daycare in itself, but I'm struggling with the number. And I'm not saying that nine wouldn't work. I think that a number between the three and nine somewhere, you know, I think that's where it is. And I just don't want to throw one out arbitrarily, just, you know, what it is. I would feel, again, I think we've seen cases, right, somewhere, and Mr. Falk reminded me of this today, and we know this, is that some folks have applied for a certain number, right? And then they've come back to increase that number, right? And we get to see, you know, how that works. And I would be more comfortable, in my view. Again, I have an issue with the nine. Again, we've heard more from neighbors on this case than, on this application than others. It doesn't mean that what they're proposing is not good for the community, good for the surrounding area. It just means that, you know, there's some trepidation about what's going on there. And absolutely, being very familiar with this neighborhood, when it was built, I worked for a company that, you know, did a lot of work in there. And I saw that the whole neighborhood grew up, the whole development grew up. And I noticed that on some days you'll drive down the street and it seems like you're zigzagging down the street. And then there's days where it's just peaceful, quiet, there's nothing. So I think it's flux, right? It's, I think this street is no different than other streets in that neighborhood, right? It just depends on what day it is and what's going on. But I think that, again, you know, it's hard for me to, to look at that nine today to, you know, be comfortable with that. So really, the question is, I would support this application with a lesser, a lesser intensity. So I guess the discussion kind of sounds like we're kind of maybe, most of us are at that point, the majority is, would be. So what would that number be? What would we be comfortable at, you know? And it doesn't preclude the applicant from coming back in the future, right, for more, right? This is not, we wouldn't be doing something that would tie their hands at this point. But we have obviously the ability to, you know, approve a lesser incursion, so, a lesser intensity. So do we want to discuss that?
Could we, they said the driveway accommodated four vehicles. Do we go by that and say four children? Or do we say that one vehicle brings two children? I don't know. What is the criteria? I don't think I'd be inclined to go too far over five.
That's about where I am.
Mr. Coria?
I guess I have a little bit of a struggle with kind of picking a lower number and going with it, so to speak, or seeing if we can come to an agreement on a lower number. Another thought is, I think this might have been a big learning process for the neighborhood, right? Nothing like this has happened. A bunch of folks have come out, probably no one knew, maybe even the applicants, that they can have three children there. I think everybody's hearing that this board's struggling with nine. One opportunity perhaps is to table this for two weeks and let the applicant who's heard us struggle with nine, let them make a proposal perhaps for a less number that we could adjudicate on and perhaps the neighbors could think about and process it a little versus us decide on a number. And when I see all of us struggling with nine, I guess I'm, I struggle with trying to pick a lower number that we think might work and going with it versus agreeing that we're not comfortable with nine. So we don't want to move forward with that. And I think giving the applicant and the abutters two weeks to process and perhaps maybe meet and see if there's some sort of a better number that they can come up with, just my thought, that would be my preference.
I don't, I appreciate what you're saying. And this is not, this is not in disagreement with you or just kind of where maybe I'm coming from. I hear what you're saying. I think that if we were in question of something else that's number-related, like square footage or where incursion is and all that, I think at this point, my opinion would be, respecting completely where you're coming from, is that if we do that, we're just perpetuating, like we're, in this case, I believe, we would just be opening the door again for somebody else to keep coming back, coming back. So I guess what I'm saying is that if they came back and says, "We want eight," and the neighbors say, "No, we don't want any of that." We're no different there than we are tonight. That's the, and that's kind of where I'm at. And so I think that, and I know what you're saying, it's like, hey, what's the right thing for, what do you think the right thing for them is? I think, what is the right thing? I don't know if the neighbors are going to be able to tell us how many people, how many kids they're going to want. They don't, listen, I think that in my, in my observation of it is, I think if three is allowed and they meet the criteria, that's the minimum that they're going to want. I'm thinking that there is a compromise somewhere. And I'm honestly thinking it's either five or six, and maybe it's five. And that's where we go. And I think for me, I would almost be wanting to make that motion tonight. But I hear what you're saying. I think that, I don't think we would be necessarily in a different spot next week. The only spot we'd be different is if we were all thinking five or we would agree on five and they came back and said five. But I don't think it's going to be any different in the end, if you follow what I'm saying.
I am. I still, you know, respectfully see it a bit different. My preference would be for a board, or this board, the request before us is nine. We have four members who are uncomfortable with nine and think it doesn't meet the criteria. I'd be more apt to deny the nine. And if they wanted to come back for six, we could decide whether that's a significantly different application, which I'd sit here and say, it is. We hear a case for nine. I mean, I'm sorry, for six. I'd be more apt with that because the applicant would put serious thought into a serious proposal and, you know, have good rationale behind it. And so that would be my preference versus, you know, picking a lower number and hoping I get it right. Because I feel that's what the alternative is, but.
But just to follow up on that, because I do totally hear where, you know, you're coming from. And I understand your concerns, but just as a counter to that, if, say, we were to approve five, either, either parties could decide to appeal that decision and come back. So the applicant could say, "No, I really want eight or nine," and they could choose to appeal. The abutters could say, "Five's not acceptable." They could choose to appeal. So I guess either way, you could have another bite at the apple.
And I, again, agree with Mr. Mancara. I don't, if they were to come back and say, if we were to give them that opportunity, I don't see a significant difference between nine children and five children. The object is still the same. They're still applying for a daycare. That hasn't changed. So I don't think that it would be the same. It's just, we're reducing the number. And I agree with Mr. Boucher that we should limit it. We should follow through with the motion tonight rather than wait and come back. I think I would rather just limit it to five. Because I don't even think that I would be in agreement with six. I mean, if you can have three without any of our intervention at all, this is adding two children. That is not a large impact. Adding five or six children is a large impact. But that's just my humble opinion.
I guess one other thought, if they said, hey, we're going to go with three, you know, forget this board, there's still a lot of things that change. They have to build the fence, they have to get the other permits, the thing gets up and running. And if, if, if an applicant were to go that route, that gives, I would phrase it this way, that gives them the ability to demonstrate to the abutters that they can run a situation with three children and have no impact and everybody's fine, and then ask for more, right? So that, they, you know, whether it's three or five, I think the act of incorporating a daycare and the fence and the permits and, you know, the traffic of three versus five, because that may not be much different. But just going from zero to three, but just establishing a daycare, I think is the biggest delta that's going to be experienced. And of course, they could obviously do that without, you know, any approval from us. But I just wanted to throw that out also, that, you know, they could take that route right now, which could ultimately get them, say, to a higher number if they're demonstrating things are like no big deal with three. Just a thought I wanted to throw out there.
I think they've still applied for a special exception, right? So I think they were definitely know, right, that they could have had three without a special exception. Yeah. So just following my thought is that, that not, you know, that, just, just not approving anything of special exception, which means that they apply for a special exception for a certain amount, three or less, they wouldn't have to be here. So then this, we wouldn't be really, what would we be voting on? And if we deny this, right, then.
They could do three tomorrow.
Right. And if they do that, then what does that bring for the future, for any?
Well, they could, they could ask for a rehearing.
Right. But they couldn't come back and say, "We would like."
Well, the board would have to do the Fisher versus Dover test. It would have to be a significantly different application. They couldn't come back for nine. If you deny nine, they can't come back for nine. They have to come back with something that the board deems is substantially different, which is going to probably be a lower number, somewhere between four and nine somewhere. They can do three by right without any approval by us or this board.
I mean, it sounds like, you know, the. I mean, it's, it sounds like, you know, there's probably five folks who, I'm sorry, three folks who are okay with a lower number. I, I don't want to stop that. I'd just like to have my, you know, just wanted to get my thoughts out. So just, you know, keep going.
I, I, I think, you know, I think, I, I, again, I hear exactly what you're saying. I, I understand it. I think in the end, we might, I think everything ends up in the same place. It's just the process. So I, I would be comfortable, and it sounds like five would be comfortable for both of you is, and I'm not putting that, I just want to make sure, and if that's the case, then I just suggest we make a motion for that. If no one wants to make that motion, I'll make it.
Yeah, have at it.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for Shaid and Neil Farhake. Applicant is Neil Farhake, Six Hibiscus Way. They are requesting a special exception from Land use code section 190 dash 47B for a major home occupation from a home in, home. An in-home daycare for up to, is this where I change the?
Yeah.
It's going to be up.
Right.
Yeah, up to five children. That will be the motion for that. So we find it is listed in Table of Uses. It will not create undue tra- traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. There was a lot of discussion about the original special exception and the quantity of children. The approvers of this, this application feel that five will be a lesser incursion, a lesser impact, and therefore we are, we are making that as the motion for five children. We find it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal system. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled, which is the childcare facilities located within a dwelling in special conditions are fulfilled and was attested to by the applicant. We find that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. With that, I make a motion to approve the special exception. Seconded by Mr. Minkara. And Minkara, any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor? That's Minkara, McKay, and Boucher in favor? Those in opposition? That's Mr. Karia in opposition. Congratulations, your application has been approved for five children. If you have any questions or anything, feel free to call Mr. Fark. And don't forget, there is a three-day window of appeal. With that, I'll close case number six and open case number seven. Case number seven is for 158 Amherst Street LLC. Applicant is Ally Bird Zoomies LLC, 158 Amherst Street. Description is 158 Amherst Street LLC owner, Ally Bird Zoomies LLC applicant, 158 Amherst Street, sheet 61B, lot 113, requesting use variance from Land Use Code section 190 dash 15, Table 15 dash 1, number 27, to allow a dog daycare and boarding business. It's in the RA zone. Welcome. You see your name and address, please, and just speak into the mic so we can hear you. Thank you.
I'm Ally Bird and I reside at 34 Franklin Street. This is in relation to 158 Amherst Street, though. Do you want me to just attack it?
Just go ahead, just however you want to do it. Tell us what, we, we have your application, so we've gone through it, but you can go ahead and tell us what you want to do or whatever you want to say, and you've got 15 minutes.
All right. I will fill quite a number of those up. Thank you for hearing me tonight and thank you for everyone who's here tonight to express both their support and concerns. Owning my own dog daycare and boarding business is an initiative I've been thinking about for a number of years, and I do not take its operation and management lightly, especially in relation to how it may affect my neighbors. I will walk through the primary concerns of noise, parking, waste management, and safety, which are the primary concerns that were relayed to me by the abutters. In terms of my background in this area, between 2012 and 2016, I fostered death row pit bulls and worked on their behaviors to rehabilitate them and adopt them out to new families. By the end of this summer, I will have completed my training to become a certified dog trainer. And my mother and I attended a week-long workshop at the Pet Boarding and Daycare Expo this past fall to learn more about how to run and operate a dog boarding business in a clean, quiet, professional manner. The management of dogs is not terribly dissimilar to the management of people. By understanding each dog's personality and preferences, along with providing structure and routine, a quiet, happy environment is established. Before I go more in depth about what the business will offer and what all entails, I'd like to note that when I initially submitted my variance application, it was kind of suggested to me to kind of go big and list out wider hours or kind of my end goal. But after talking to the closest abutter who operates a business, I have adjusted my hours and kind of cut them down to not affect the neighborhood quite as much and even possibly adjust where the fence would be located. As for the business mission and overview, our mission at Zoomies is to provide local dog owners with a safe, caring, and engaging environment for their dogs to socialize, exercise, and stimulate their minds while owners are away. Zoomies prides itself on the at-home feel of a calmer and more personal approach to dog care than many competitors. Service hours, we're searching for daycare that's available from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM during the business week only. Boarding would be available seven days a week, but with weekend pickup and drop-offs, that would be by appointment only during the day. Boarding encompasses the same care as daycare, just with an evening bathroom break and overnight accommodations inside while under 24/7 onsite staff supervision. As for capacity, in accordance with industry best practices, the space should accommodate approximately 15 dogs. And as for staff, there'd be one to two onsite at any given time. Now, I'd like to move forward onto the primary concerns presented by the abutters, barking, parking, waste management, and safety. As for barking, that's the big one. Many popular boarding facilities in the area are overly large metal structures that ricochet sounds off their walls and house more dogs than deemed appropriate by industry best practices, which is anywhere between 70 to 100 square feet per dog, depending on size. These facilities are also heavily staffed by younger, less experienced employees who can be inattentive and untrained in proper ways to keep dogs safe, happy, and quiet. This is how you end up with a giant warehouse full of awful smells and anxious barking dogs. And this is why many of those who are against this business have negative associations with dog kennels, and I can't blame them. Zoomies is not a traditional kennel, it's the anti-kennel. There are many techniques that can be used to eliminate barking, all of which, all of which will be employed at Zoomies. I'd like to preface this list of techniques by saying that dogs will not be outside all day. This is not a facility where dogs are just left outside to bark and go crazy and do what they want all day. The majority of the time will be indoors, however, they will need anywhere between three to five bathroom breaks during their stay. The first technique, you can remove as much external stimuli as possible. A solid fence prevents dogs from reacting to pedestrians, incoming customers, other dogs, et cetera. As for sounds, their outdoor space will be up against the main road. If you've ever tried to hold a conversation that close to Amherst Street where the fence would be, you'd witness your voice being swept away in the sound of traffic. The noise from fire trucks is not likely to set dogs off when they are being exposed to loud traffic during their outdoor time anyway. Dogs become sensitized to sounds just like humans. You can also redirect the dog to another stimulus. You can use positive reinforcement when they're playing quietly. All the dogs will be supervised at all times. And then anxiety and overstimulation are the most common reasons for barking. So some dogs simply do not belong in daycare and they would be, you know, asked to find other daycare accommodations. But industry best practices require or recommend that each dog gets at least two hours of rest time per day to reset and then calm down, so they're not barking and going insane. Also, you can organize healthy play groups by keeping dogs that are familiar friends together. And also, one of the major advantages is steps to prevent and stop barking can be taken in a commercial building that typically aren't possible in a residential home. For instance, we have the option of installing soundproofing panels on the interior as well as soundproof windows. We can block any view of outside stimulus to prevent reactions and have 24/7 supervision. Have you ever encountered a neighborhood dog that was left outside for an extended bathroom break and listened to it bark for who knows how long? That is more annoying and detrimental to any neighborhood than a well-run boarding and daycare facility. Since we offer nonstop supervision, we're less effective to the neighboring homes than if a residential owner left their single dog outside barking unattended. Also, keep the reception area blocked from view from inside, so incoming dogs don't disrupt the dogs that are already in there, and schedule outdoor bathroom breaks on a routine basis so dogs can anticipate when they will be going out and do not need to feel, that do not feel like they need to vocally alert us. As for parking, I understand that neighbors are concerned about parking and traffic, but to be honest, it is the last thing that they need to worry about, especially if the originally proposed fence in an area is adjusted to move to the corner lot and we keep the full seven parking spaces that are there now. The average duration of a dog daycare drop-off and pickup is under 60 seconds, sometimes under 20 seconds. Owners are typically on their way to and from work and don't have time to linger. They want to get their dogs settled and they want to be on their way. Did any of you ever bring your children to daycare when they were younger? You may have experienced the same desire to make as short a stop as possible and get to work. Drop-off and pickup for boarding, on average, takes anywhere between five and 10 minutes, depending on the familiarity of the dog and the owner with the facility. Those will be by appointment only during business hours. Daycare arrivals and pickups are also staggered, with dogs arriving anywhere in the 8:00 AM to noon timeframe. With seven parking spaces, I doubt the parking lot will ever be full at any given time. And for example, Granite State Dog Training up on 101A, they actually will take in up to 50 dogs and they have eight parking spaces, just a reference there. I've been watching dogs professionally for the past six months, and I can count on both hands the number of times pickup and drop-offs have overlapped. With approximately 15 dogs being dropped off in the morning over a span of three to four hours, that's only four to five cars in the parking lot per hour and for under a minute at a time. As for waste management, we've all encountered a trash can full of dog waste at a local park on a hot baking day and it's not a pleasant aroma. However, when bags are disposed of properly, with the bag tied tightly in a closed lid can, the smell cannot be detected from more than a few feet away, especially when emptied on a regular basis. All waste is removed of immediately after it's made. If not, other tox can eat it, step in it, roll in it, et cetera. It's in my best interest to keep the property waste-free and clean regardless of smell. As for urine, artificial pet grass is installed with several layers of material underneath that break down urine and filter the smell. This grass is also manufactured to be sprayed down with a hose so that urine and water can siphon through it easily. There are several brands of artificial grass cleaner that are sprinkled on top to eliminate odors and kill bacteria. With proper cleanup procedures and regular emptying of trash cans, neighbors will be no more aware of the smell of the business than they are of their own dog. As for safety, yes, it's on Amherst Street and people have said that that's too busy of a road, whereas I'm looking at Pupville, Chewy's Playland, American Canine Country, Granite State Dog Center, and McOskar Kennels, and they're all on 101 or 101A, right up against the road for the most part. So a lot of places are right there. As for fencing, we would have at least a minimum height of eight feet, foot, eight-foot fencing, and it'd be solid. So it would not be chain-linked fence that dogs can actually climb and get traction into. It'd be a solid, smooth fence. And underneath it, you can install netting and wiring so that they cannot dig out. So that's, that's what we would have installed around for the outside space. And then people were worried about dogs breaking out on leashes, and we will not be having dogs outside of the premises on leashes. The owners will be bringing the dogs in on leash and it, you know, that on a secure lead that's fitted properly, bring them inside. They're either in our building or in the fenced-in area until their owner takes them home. There's no walking around, peeing on snowbanks or whatever. So in conclusion, it's my understanding that when the variance notice went out to abutters, there simply was not enough information to give an accurate depiction of what Zoomies entails and represents. This naturally caused panic among neighbors and word started to spread. We are not the noisy, smelly, inattentive, and uncaring neighbor that crams as many dogs through the door for the dollar. We are a smaller establishment, family-owned and operated, with strict procedures and guidelines in place to run a respectable, clean, and neighborhood-friendly business. Younger generations are opting to own more pets and treat them more like family than any age group before. These are the people who will be buying homes in bustling cities like Nashua, and these are the people who will want top-notch care for their pets. Thank you. Sorry, that was a little long.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Minkara.
So there are a number of zoning districts in the city that do permit, you know, dog grooming and daycare or boarding facilities. One, did you, did you look at other properties, other potential locations? And two, what about this property in particular was appealing to you?
We have been looking for the better part of, we've been looking for several months now, actually, and we had floor plans and everything designed, and we spent three months putting those together for a property on Pine Street by the bypass. And unfortunately, the owner, it, let's just say, it did not work out. Short story, it did not work out. So we said, all right, new plan, let's see if we can purchase our own property, because then we're in charge, we don't have to rely on someone, on a landlord or anything like that. And to be honest, there's really not a whole ton out there for sale for, that would fit this sort of business. And I really like this property because it's in a great location, it's small enough that one or two people can manage it. It already is pretty empty on the inside, so it's not like it would need a million renovations. I mean, you, you put up a fence and, you know, obviously, you know, change the flooring and things like that, but it doesn't require a whole ton of, of adjustment. And it's, it's in Nashua, which is where I wanted to be operating and bring business to the city. And it's cute. It, it is. It has curb appeal and I've been watching dogs and people have been telling me that, you know, they really like a smaller, cozier feel for their dog. They are over the, you know, Superdog and the Walmart centers of dog daycare where it's like, oh, your dog gets to come here for 20 bucks. But we don't really watch them. We hire some high school kid that's not really paying attention, they're on their phone the whole time, whereas we would be charging higher rates for fewer dogs. So it just gives a more homey feel, I think. And it's in a good location and it just, it's cozy.
Thank you. You, go ahead, Mr. Karia.
I was intrigued by the AstroTurf with a filter or something underneath. Could you, could you describe that a little more?
I wish I had the diagram and I wish I knew the exact filters, but I actually had this installed when I lived in Boston and I had pets. And it's, I, I wish I had the actual things. There's a layer of artificial grass at the very top, and then there's three or four layers underneath, followed by crushed gravel or, or some sort of crushed stone. And basically what it helps does is, I mean, obviously you should pick up solid waste and get rid of that immediately, but as for urine and even, you know, messier messes, you can hose it down and it just helps break it down and silt and siphon it kind of through this, so, and then through the gravel, so then it gets absorbed deeper into the ground rather than just sitting there on the top being disgusting and making smells. And then it also has, there's a variety of like little, it's kind of like ice melt, it looks like ice melt, but it's green, and it's meant to cover up smells and break down bacteria in, it's specifically made to, for, it's called pet grass. So that we'd be installing that.
Okay, just curious, I mean, I see those pet places like at Logan Airport and I wonder if that's what they're using.
Oh, I don't know if they would have the whole system underneath it, but, because you can also go and, you know, on Amazon, you can go buy a little patch of fake grass and there's just a tray underneath it and that doesn't do quite as much.
All right, I'm all set.
Just to follow, was the Karia, this would, this would be located where exactly?
At 158 Amherst Street.
No, where would the grass be?
Oh, 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 oh.
Where would it be? I know where.
I'm like, I thought it would be within the fenced-in area outside.
And how, and how large would that be? Like what's?
See, that, my original plan for the fence, I'm rethinking because it's right up against my closest abutter and I don't know the particular square footage, but I would guess a thousand square feet? It'd be the corner lot instead.
Okay. All right. Then did you, so you mentioned that you would be looking to put in a fenced area in a different spot, right?
I'm open, I, I want to get along with neighbors and I don't want to, you know, be all up in their grill.
When you, in, in, in this business, obviously it would be a solid type fence. Is there, is there a height that's in particular that, that you'd be looking for, like that's good for, for this?
Minimum eight feet, but up to 10.
All right.
And a lot of them actually install something that leans in, but I wasn't thinking.
Just so you understand. Just so you understand, anything over six feet requires a variance.
Oh, mother of pearl.
Yeah, so, I just want you to understand that, anything, so we're allowed up to six feet in the city.
Okay.
Anything above that, you'd have to come in front of us for that variance. So that would be in addition, but we can't consider that, we could not consider that tonight because that was not advertised.
Cool.
So just, as we move along, I just want you to understand that that's a whole different.
I learn something new every day.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I have for you. You have anything else for us? Oh, Mr. McCarron has another question.
Just wanted to, when you say relocating to the corner lot, do you mean relocating the fenced enclosure to the corner of Amherst and Norfolk?
I believe so, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Way from the Butters and up to the corner.
Yes, because originally, I wanted to absorb a couple of the parking spaces and then have a larger area that's more, like, so that the fence would be flush with the house so that it would still maintain as much curb appeal as possible, but I'm also open to exploring it being on the opposite side of the house.
Okay.
Yep.
So, just again, you know, we're not talking details, but just so you understand, moving it to the corner of the street there, of Norfolk Street, if you're looking at, again, because you're on a corner lot, it requires a, there's got to be a sight, a vision sight, and Mr. Falk is telling me that's got to be twenty-five feet, it's got to be off the corner, so you can't go right up to the property line with a fence, so you'd have to be back twenty-five feet. That's for the safety.
Basically brings it to the house.
Huh?
Right?
There's a sight-visibility triangle that otherwise.
Oh, I know what, yes, I get what you're talking.
Pulling up to an intersection, you won't be able to look to the sides to see if cars are coming in.
No, that's a good point, actually. I did not think of that.
There's several departments in City Hall that wouldn't be supportive of a fence right at the intersection.
Yeah, I get that, because when I lived in Boston, I got hit pulling out because I couldn't see either side. Okay.
All right, just so you understand, I know this is all new to you, but just so you understand some of the challenges.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
All set, thank you.
All right, you'll probably be back up, so, thank you.
I will.
All right, so as I move along, just to reiterate, the process is that I will be asking for anybody that's in favor of this application to come on up, and then those with questions or opposition, and then the applicant will come back to rebut anything that was said in opposition, and then there will be only one person allowed for anybody that's in opposition to come back to finally rebut anything else that was said. In this process, what we'd ask is just to be respectful, anybody who wants to come and talk, you can all have the time you need, there'll be five minutes apiece. If there's something that somebody else said and you don't want to repeat it and you want your time to be used for something else, you can just say, "I agree with," you know, the speaker that spoke before me or whatever, so, just so you understand kind of the process. All testimony, again, will be given to the board, we don't allow anybody to talk to anybody in the audience, it's really to the board only, just so we all understand, okay? If you have any questions, as you come up, feel free to ask, we're here to help you. So, anybody like to speak in favor of this application? Come on up, give us your name and address, please.
I have some notes here. Hi, I'm Amy Weber, and I live at sixteen Shady Lane in Nashua, New Hampshire. So, some things that I wanted to talk about, currently, my dog stays with Ally during the day while I'm working, and it's all different times of drop-off, pickup, because I'm flexible with my work hours, which is kind of nice that she allows for that. One thing I want to mention is drop-off and pickup with her is very quick and very easy because all I do is send her a quick text message saying, "I'm fifteen minutes away." She'll have my dog on a leash, outside, ready, waiting, well, right at the door, waiting for me, and then I can just, you know, basically walk up to the door, grab the leash, and head out. As for the drop-off, my dog is like so excited to be able to go to play at Ally's Dog Daycare that I basically just open the car door, grab her leash, and she walks right over to Ally, who's already outside waiting, because again, I've sent her a text message saying fifteen minutes away or so, and she'll just walk her right in. So there's, it's a really short drop-off, pickup, there's never a time that I'm longer there, longer than thirty seconds per se for us, so very quick drop-off and pickup. The other thing is when I started and met with Ally the first time, she did a meet-and-greet, she was very particular on questions that she asked about our dog to make sure that our dog was compatible with the other dogs so that there wasn't any sort of, you know, disagreement amongst dogs. So she's very particular about who she lets in, what dogs she lets in, the personality, she's very intuitive on what the personality is as well and what their needs are. So, those are just a couple of things I wanted to say.
Any questions for Ms. Weber? Thank you, thank you for coming. Anybody else in favor of this application? Come on up, sir, and give us your name and address.
George Sturgeon, fifteen Cimarron Drive, I'm the Realtor for Ally transaction. I just wanted to just address quickly, I think you've got a letter from Rick Cardinal about to Mr. Tamposi?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to offer an opinion as well, that, you know, there's no, that's all opinion, there's no facts, no empirical data on whether it's going to, whether this would affect, impact property values. I think with some of the items brought up in Rick's letter and how Ally's addressed most of those, he would probably, if he knew all that stuff, have a different opinion, but I would just like to say that I think it's, if anything, it's a net-zero impact to property values as opposed to the current use that's there, printing company. That's just my opinion, no data, no factual data, much like Rick's opinion. Couple other things, so I ran across Ally, I have a lease listing, and that particular lease, I did not, it had a food place next to it, so there was no animals going to be allowed for this lease. I got seven dog clients calling on the thing, so there is a need in Nashua for this, and it's, six of those seven were operating out of their houses like Ally and see the need for the business model, and now they're looking to lease or buy for this particular need, so they'll probably see me back here someday with another client, but there is a need out there, and it's growing, and so that's just the point. And Ally's not my only client, out of those seven that came, I've got two other people that I'm either looking to find a lease or potentially buy. And the only other thing I'd like to say is, so I've been on, I've known Ally for six months, I've been on her Facebook site for zoomies, and she's always posting videos of dogs playing outside, dogs playing inside, I rereviewed all the videos, and there was like one bark, it was outside, and it was like a half-bark, a playbark, so it seems like she's got real good control of everything with the dogs and really does run a happy place, so, that's it.
Any questions? Thank you very much for coming. Anybody else would like to speak in favor of this application? Come on up, sir, give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Harold Brodel, I'm the owner of 158 Amherst Street, and if I could just give you a quick handout here. So as you can see on that display there, most of the area, if not all the area, around 158 Amherst Street is current businesses. The makeup, the layout of that area has changed quite a bit from the times of horses and dirt roads. And why I say that is that my immediate neighbor, which is 156 Amherst Street, who's not here this evening, is the only adjacent person to the building who has a residential home, and they have seen large changes in this area over time, and they have a concern. They have such a concern that they went around to the entire neighborhood and explained their concerns, which were two. One is that the real estate values were going to go down and that there was going to be a smell and/or barking. As you've heard, it's been debunked, there is no credible evidence that the property value will go down. They actually said that when the print shop went in over ten years ago, when a variance was off, was given, and the property values have gone up since then. In terms of the smell, Ally has addressed that, and in terms of the barking, she's addressed that, which is, I can understand is the biggest concern that people have. It's a shame that people only get a card and only get two really words on it that said daycare or boarding facility, so that was their biggest concerns. I've had a great relationship with all the people in our neighborhood, but no one came to actually talk to me about this, okay? The only person I did is the person that's not here this evening, which was the immediate neighbor who was residential. I explained the case, explained how Ally is very knowledgeable about the industry, the concerns that all the neighbors would have, and he's not here, she's not here. So obviously, they don't have a concern unless they sent one in, but they didn't voice any concern to me once we finished our conversation. You know, I apologize if the neighbors don't think I personally should have went around to explain the situation to them, but I didn't feel it was my place to try to explain someone else's business plan and what they were going to do. The building itself's been on the market for four years, okay? The price has been dropped seventy thousand dollars from when I started, okay? I have turned away a lot of people that I didn't think fit that building or would have no shot at a variance, they were wasting your time. I did not feel that having Ally come this evening was a waste of time, after speaking to her, understanding her business plan, understanding her concerns in the neighborhood, and there were, and my immediate neighbor with the layout of the fence, she went and spoke with her, and she's trying to figure out a way of relaying that out, that was something that was an oversight that she had. But beyond that, I think all of the other issues that I had or my immediate neighbor had were addressed, and I'm hoping that you will consider this and vote in favor of it. Thank you.
You referenced the immediate, the only residential neighbor, which is, what's the address of that?
156 Amherst Street.
156.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess, how long have you been in business there since?
So I've been in business thirty-three years, I've been in business at that location since 2009. February of 2009 is when we closed after we got the variance, they're on the print shop.
I see, and, because I remember, I've been on this board long enough that you were, you know, I was sitting on this board, maybe not even as a new member when you came before. How, as you're, I didn't hear any complaints along the way of your business, and I was just curious, that seems to have worked perfectly fine in the neighborhood over this time.
Correct, yes, I have had no problems. I mean, you know, our business has changed a lot, obviously, if it didn't, I would want to still, I want to be there. When I started thirty-three years ago, there were sixty printers in the area, there's probably about four left right now. I'm struggling to pay the bills, I'm struggling to pay for that overhead, so I've put other plans in, you know, into action. It's just not viable for me to stay there anymore. I started with one broker, Neil Barrett, who is a good friend of mine who passed away, then I switched with, and I work with Purple Finch, I have a relationship with her for real estate that I oversee on Main Street, and then that didn't work, so I went with VR Real Estate, and they brought a lot of qualified people in, so.
This is where we're at. All right, thanks, just curious.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. Anybody like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? All right, so we'll go one at a time, you could come on up one at a time. Come on up, sir. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is James Hogan, my address is 51 Pine Hill Avenue in Nashua, and I have a letter that I'm going to read, and I'll give you copies of it.
Oh, all right, we'll share, no problem.
If you'll pardon me a minute, before I get into the letter, I met with Morgan Hollis as he came out of the door here earlier, talked to him, he said he had been here for forty years, and I remember when he just came here as an attorney, I was city engineer here for twenty-eight years, and he was an attorney just starting out at that time, he was working for the city as a matter of fact. He said me, he told me when we were out there, "Good luck with the dog situation," because he used to do the study on dogs, and from six dogs, there was a sound of eighty-seven decibels, which is quite a bit. In fact, I've been told today that in 1910, there was a study that found dog shelter to measure a hundred and eighteen decibels, and a jackhammer is rated at a hundred and ten decibels, so I'm not in favor. To get into my letter, my wife and I are highly opposed to the proposed variance for a dog daycare grooming business at 158 Amherst Street. On May 13, nineteen, oh, yeah, twenty nineteen, I obtained a copy of the May 7, nineteen, yeah, excuse me, 2018 analysis prepared for the zoning board by Mr. Carter Falk, AICP, who is sitting with you. He was a director, he's the Director of Planning and Manager of Zoning, which lists five conditions that should be met for your granting a variance, and he wrote under each of the five stated conditions what the applicant stated in response to the conditions. In my opinion, the applicant did not satisfy any of the conditions. On number one, regarding enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship, the applicant's answer was dead wrong. The current printing business is perfectly quiet all day and not as noisy as would be twenty barking dogs from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Number two, not alter the character of the neighborhood, the applicant's reference to the dog-to-square footage ratio does not even address the character of the neighborhood. On number three, not diminish the value of surrounding properties, the surrounding property values would definitely decrease when they are subjected to twenty barking dogs. The applicant's claim that curb appeal became because of a home-like environment for dogs and a proposed fence will increase property values, this is false. On number four, not contrary to the public interest, the applicant's response to this concern does not address how it must not alter the character of the neighborhood. The applicant speaks only that Nashua needs more dog business. Number five, substantial justice would be done to the property owner, the applicant is only interested in the dogs of Nashua and the surrounding community. I hope that you will consider the many single-family homes in Mount Vernon, Milford, Norfolk, Bristol, Essex, Berkshire, and Sullivan Streets, and the Pine Hill Avenue and Welwood Avenue when they deny this request. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for coming, sir. Okay, next person who wants to come up and speak in opposition, please come on up. Sir, I think this- Sir, I think this, I think she, I think she'd be, uh...
Yeah, I'm Marilyn Hogan, and we live at, and I agree with everything my husband said, and we live at fifty-one Pine Hill Avenue, which is, Norfolk Street is a very short street, so there's two or three houses. So, we're pretty close. If I look out my window, I can see the backyard of one fifty-six Amher Street. And I have, I talked with my neighbors, I went up and down Norfolk Street last night, and I talked this morning with the lady that owns the business at one fifty-six Amher Street, and she, I didn't talk with her, I talked with her secretary, and they said that she was very glad that I was coming, because she opposed it one hundred percent, because from her side of her house to where the dogs would be is only fifteen feet. So she doesn't want that's business there either. And the people on, on Milford Street, I talked with someone on Milford Street, which is up one from Norfolk Street, and they don't want it either. We can hear the dogs, we do not have air conditioning in our house, so in the summer, if the dogs are out, we're going to hear them bark, because our house fits kind of crooked. It, it's an old house, and it faces south completely, so if you drive up Pine Hill Avenue, we're kind of crooked, but our house is so that our windows will hear everything, we can hear everything. Once in a while, I hear the trucks when they come to leave the paper, but that's occasionally. But a dog, we just don't want them there. I mean, it's, she made a very good presentation, it all sounded great, but dogs are dogs, and they're going to bark when there's a thunderstorm, when a fire truck goes by, or anything else, and it's, it will just be too much for, for our neighborhood. It's a small, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood, and that's the way we'd like to keep it. So we're opposed one hundred percent. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for coming. Next person who would like to come up, speak in opposition?
Hi, Stephen DeBona.
You can lift that up if you'd like.
Thank you.
Or pull it out. Thank you.
Stephen DeBona, eleven Bristol Street. The first thing I just wanted, I had emailed in a letter. I wasn't sure if I was going to make it here tonight, so I wanted to find out if you guys were going to be reading that, so I could address some other things that came up tonight. It was two pages, so you might remember it.
I don't think I've seen a letter from Mr. DeBona.
No.
I emailed it last week. The same night the Bruins won.
Mr. Falk hasn't received it. Do you, do you have it with you, or?
I do. I have a copy.
Would you like to read it in?
Yeah. I just, I just want to answer a couple of the comments first. So one of my, one of the things I learned from, just from sitting back here and watching everything is, so they say the property values aren't going to go down, but like, do they just say, "I don't think the property values are going to go down," or do they have to have some sort of proof, or, I mean, it's hard to prove whether things are going to open down, but more than just, I don't know, I'm just asking a question, I don't know how this stuff works.
Mr. Curry, go ahead.
I see oftentimes, an applicant or in a butter will get a professional opinion, and oftentimes applicant and a butters get professional opinions that say equal and opposite things.
I'm, I'm sure they do.
And, and I would say that the state also leaves it up to our judgment to take into consideration whether we value those professional considerations, and whether we value the personal thoughts that are offered.
Thank you for the clarification. It's my, like I said, I've owned, I've only owned a house for five years, so I don't know all the zoning board things. So one of the comments that was brought up by the applicant is, there was a comment about other dog cares being really loud and bouncing off noises. I did a quick search, most of those are listed, are in commercial areas, like dead-end industrial We, so there, at least on the Google search of bigger places, I didn't really see any in residential areas. The, she addressed the noise from the fire trucks. I live three streets down, when the fire trucks go down, go by, my dogs go nuts. So I don't understand how a dog won't see, hear the difference from the, the fire truck going down the road. And Anheuser Street, they always have their lights on. And then there was no comment about the airplane noise? So we're already in the flight path, so how are you going to address the high pitch of airplane noises to the dogs? So she also mentioned like the Granite State dog training. I looked it up real fast, that's in Amher, so I'm not sure that addresses comments to And one of the other concerns is like, you know, they talked about not going around, they didn't really go around to the neighbors. I'm only three, I'm three houses and one over, and there was, nobody went around to say, "Hey, you know, this is what's going on." I just, all I heard is, I saw the sign go up, and I have what I saw online. So since you guys don't have my letter, just let me read this real fast. I'm writing the board to discuss the use of a variance at one fifty-eight Amher Street. The address is listed in an RA zone, which I believe doesn't even give, I'm not very good, but an RA zone doesn't even give the option. It's like a dash line, it's not a, so how does that address what variance works?
Well, if you're looking at me, maybe I'll take a stab. RA is residential.
Yeah, I know, urban.
And so businesses are not permitted, although this property had a previous variance for the business that's active there now.
Okay, that's fine. So I've read through the proposal, I have several concerns at some of the assumptions made in the application. The current business is a small visiting service, he's been a fantastic neighbor, there's never any cars there. It's very quiet, there's no, he has seven parking spots. Every time I've, I've used his services, there's never been any cars in there. The introduction of a dog daycare and kennel will have enormous impact for the neighborhood. Even though most of Amher Street is zoned for commercial uses, the adjacent Pine Hill neighborhood will be greatly affected by the increased traffic, because they have to pull onto Norfolk Street to go in, so then they're going to start driving around. So it'll be greatly affected by the increased traffic and noise by cause of all the dogs. The sidewalk in front of the building is used by many pedestrians, including schoolchildren, and there is a city bus stop directly in front of that property. So now there's going to be a congregation of people waiting to use the bus right next to all the dogs that are outside. And there's also students who live in this neighborhood, and there's no bus transportation to the local schools. So they all have the, so there'll be schoolchildren walking by, and I don't know if you guys have ever been on Charlotte Ave, where Charlotte Street, where they have buses and all the traffic turns to go to school. That is already crazy enough with the school buses almost having to cut traffic, just to cut in. I mean, there's just a ton of increased traffic there without any real lights to slow anybody down. There's a pedestrian right light there that occasionally works. So, and then the current, the current use was for an office, the variances was just for an office building. So I think an office building and moving into a dog daycare is a very large change. Sorry, I'm just trying to read through this real fast. The application states that curb appeal will be maintained, but a large fence and twenty dogs do not maintain curb appeal. Right now, it's, the grass is very well-maintained.
You can wrap it up, you're over your time. Sorry about that.
Apologize, well, you just spent two minutes looking for my letter.
I know.
So I'm trying to go fast.
I just, I don't know how long your letter is, I just want to make sure you know.
No, I, I saw, I'm trying to be fast. And then, they're also, like, there, I know people are looking to open dog kennels, but there's, there's, there's a lot of, I did a quick search, and within a couple of miles, there's already a lot of dog kennel places, and they all appear to have openings. So, that's it, sorry.
Any, any questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I just wanted to add, just, sorry, one more thing. In the last applica, just make sure we talk about like the pedestrian stuff and the bus stops too, because that's pretty, I think that was missed in the last application of schoolchildren and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Probably just pull that mic down so we can hear you.
Right. About four feet.
No.
No, all good. Just the way God made me, sir. Hi, Thomas Hogan, fourteen Orlando Street. So, I, everything that gentleman just said, I also agree with him. When I stand in the kitchen of my parents' house, and you look directly out, the home that's in question, the one fifty-eight Amher Street, is not very far away. As, as far as the house being close enough to hear absolutely everything that's going on there, it is. And in fact, the way that my, my parents' house actually sits, I mean, it's, when you look out the window, the house is directly right there, and it's not that far down. So, so any noises that are going to be made there are going to be reverberated to everybody. So just, just so you know, it's, it's that close. So, in looking at the application, one of the things that was written was that there would potentially be up to two people per shift, there'd be twenty visits daily, and the original indication was that there would, that there would be turf put down in place where two parking spots were, are right now, which, if that happens, then there's not going to be enough, there's not going to be enough parking there, there's going to be people pulling onto Norfolk Street. Norfolk Street is a fairly small street, and you've got houses that are lining it, and you've often got the people that live there wanting to park on the street. So I think that parking is going to become, would, would, would absolutely be an issue. But now that I've heard the applicant discuss the plans, it sounds as if the plans, what is written down, have, have changed, and I guess, just, so just to hear my opinion, as I, as I'm here and I'm listening to this, to this, to, to the, to everybody speak, I guess, to my horror, I'm seeing that, A, the plans have changed, they're winging it, we're talking about, she was talking about not doing, having to do a lot of work to the house, because there really wasn't a lot of walls in the house. Well, if you're going to be putting soundproofing in, you're going to be putting a fence in, that is a lot of work. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of money, and it, it seems to be a bit of a, and further to my horror, I'm hearing things like, "We're going to put down astroturf and this type of thing, and, and this type of chemical or whatnot, or whatnot, or this type of substance in order to be able to keep the smells from going up," and, I mean, I have a dog, if you were pooping on, on actual, I have a rottweiler, if you were pooping on some kind of turf grass, and then I'm washing it into the, into the ground and the soil, that's disgusting, first of all. So it's not going to be clean, there's not going to be any way to, there's not going to be any way, I don't believe, to keep it clean. And if you're washing it off, and if, if actually the, the turf were put on the parking lot, and you're hosing it off, so you're hosing the urine and, and the feces through this, you're going to have it going everywhere. So, I, I really don't understand the whole, I can, I know everything that she spoke of, it sounded great, it sounded like everything would be under control, that, absolutely impossible. The other thing is that, so I'm also noticing that the hours would be from seven to six, the dogs would be taken care of by an extreme expert, but if you're talking about hours of staff being from seven to six, and you're talking about it being a boarding, you're talking about having dogs overnight. So you're, so you're talking about dogs being left alone in the facility overnight, and I really don't see, so, so if, if their hours are from seven to six, well, you know, that's just in time for them to leave, to go back to their neighborhood, and it's in time for everybody to get home from work when it's time to relax. So they're leaving at six, the dogs are still there, you know, but it, it doesn't make any sense to me that, that, that there wouldn't be, you know, uncontrolled, extreme noise right after hours. And if you look at the application, it's saying the hours are seven to six, twenty visits a day, and, but it's going to be a boarding as well as a daycare. Well, it's not just a daycare, it was just talking about for people that are away, so leaving the dogs there. So this great service, you're talking about leaving dogs overnight, unattended, and if you're talking about leaving dogs unattended, you're talking about anxious, nervous dogs. Those dogs are going to be barking, they're going to be creating an enormous amount of noise, it's going to be setting every other dog in the neighborhood, and you're going to be creating anxiety, and so you're going to be affecting the neighborhood drastically if this were allowed to go through.
You've got about thirty seconds left, just so you know.
There's no place for a twenty, or a ten, or a five dog shelter in a residential neighborhood. There's no reason why it couldn't be found, you know, in, in, in an area that's, that doesn't have people in it, that are going to have to be subjected to a hundred and twenty-five decibels, which, by the way, I think OSHA's eighty-five, and they recommend that you wear ear protection. So we're talking about a hundred and twenty-five decibels that dogs will make, you know, as far as noise goes. So, please, don't let this happen in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Sir, hold on, there may be some questions. All right, so just, Mrs. Bird's going to have an opportunity to come back, she's probably going to respond to some of the questions that you had. I think she did state that she was willing to do the eight, eight to six as the hours, and that there would be coverage, there would be somebody there, and she could correct me if I'm wrong when she comes back, but there is somebody that would be there twenty-four hours, there'd be a person there, so the dogs will not be unattended, those that are staying overnight. So, that's what I, that's what I heard from her, but she can give us that again. And then, I know what, you know, you're referring to the plan that she has. You know, the variance here is for a dog daycare, of course, we like to know the details. Obviously, some of those details are changing because she understood that there was some concerns from the neighbors. We take all of this into consideration, but the, the variance is for a daycare facility, period. But we take all what she's saying, and everybody's saying, you know, as, 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 you know, testimony, we take that in for our consideration. But yes, you know, she did say something different to try to accommodate, but that doesn't really change the application, just so you know.
Hmm, very good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Come on up, name and address, please.
The residential, oh, my name is Tim Hogan, I live at twenty-nine Sullivan Street, which is about thirteen houses away from the proposed dog facility. The neighbors that live on Amher Street, the Libbites, I was just told that they actually did email in a letter in their objection to it, so that would have been the single residential home on Amher Street. I don't know if you guys received that or not.
We're going to check that. What's the name again?
Little Liberty.
Little Liberty? We'll check. Go ahead.
I just want to address a few things that she had mentioned. As far as Amher Street, I live Sullivan Street, it's about halfway down. We hear fire engines go by, and they actually set off a set of dogs in our neighborhood that's further away from Amher Street than I am, and they start to howl with the fire engine, which is actually a little comical, because it's just two dogs, which isn't that big a deal, but if you had a number of dogs, and then they started setting each other off in the neighborhood that I'm in, the dogs do set each other off. The distance from my parents' house, they're at fifty-one Pine Hill Ave, is less than a distance to a house that's similar on our street, and that dog's bark directs right back into ours. So it is, the, the dog bark carries quite far. Just the, the forty cars going down that road, Norfolk Street is a very narrow street, and turning down onto it, there is a house that does have a fence and kind of has some bushes that are in the way. So turning onto that street, I avoid that street as much as I possibly can when I turn down and go to my parents' house. Putting any extra traffic there would, I, I mean, I don't go there as it is, so I don't know why anyone would want to turn down that street to try to get to anywhere. I always take a different road in or out, so that would mean anyone else traveling through that neighborhood would have to take a different road in or out, so it's not just Norfolk, it's going to be every other street on that road. Sullivan Street is a cut-through, so if they end up wanting to go somewhere else, they could potentially end up cutting down my street and increasing traffic there as well. The eight-foot fence, I have a six-foot fence that I really enjoy, but I put it up to keep my neighbors' barking dogs from bothering me, and they would still bark through that fence at me, even if I was in my shop, and they, they had no line of sight, but they could just sense that I was there, and they'd just start barking. So even a fence that's solid, dogs bark, it's, I mean, they, she, she could be a very well-trainer, but dogs bark, and, and they can't really stop that. So that's pretty much all I had to say in opposition to it.
Any questions? Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Come on up, name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Nancy.
Good evening, uh, my name is Nancy Christopher Shabbitt. I live at Five Hooker Street in Nashua, and I, uh, own NCC Business Solutions, which is located at one fifty-four Amher Street in Nashua, and I'm the neighbor of one fifty-eight. Um, I, I did submit a letter.
Yes, we got that.
Uh, so I won't spend time reviewing that detail. I am genuinely so very concerned about this application. Um, I did try to print a few pictures before I left, if you wouldn't mind sharing. Um, I actually sat at my desk in my office, so that you could see how close the fence is within fifteen feet. They're not great printouts, forgive me, but it'll give you an idea. I actually sat in my chair at my desk and took a picture. The fence is fifteen feet away from the whole side of my building, where the proposed outside area would be for the dogs. I run an accounting and business management, uh, business out of there. And I'm on the phone most of the day, and my conference room is right in front of my office, where I meet with clients, which also abuts that same area. I don't know how I will conduct my business with even three dogs outside, whether they're barking or not barking. The, the noise for that type of facility does not fit with what I was approved for. When I went for my approval before the board, it was brought to my attention that the purpose of the businesses in that area were to be a buffer between Amher Street and the residents. I did everything I possibly could to fit into that residential neighborhood and to not have noise that would interfere with that. This building was purchased as a business-use commercial building. Um, a professional service was how it was presented to me. And a dog kennel, to me, i- is, is really far off from that type of business. I can't imagine how it wouldn't be detrimental to my, my property and my business, the type of business that I run. The noise factor. I met with Ally, she's a very nice girl, I would do anything I could to help her with her business. I just don't really feel this is the proper location for it. I know Harold's been trying to sell, and I would do anything to help him as well. I just, I'm not sure how consideration was taken for the type of business I have and the, the proximity to wh- where I sit at my desk and try to conduct my job. I don't know how else to present this, it would truly be detrimental to me. I came before this board in two thousand eleven to purchase this building and took great lengths to fit into the neighborhood. Ally's presentation was great. Um, I think she has some genuine concern now. When she came to visit me, I asked her to please come into my office, and she understood. We were standing right at my desk, and, and it's from me to you a- away. Um, I just don't know how a fence would help that with the noise, um, and even if it's taller, that would actually block any view that I had outside of my office, so I'm not sure that's the answer to that either. Please, some serious consideration to the type of business that I run. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you for coming, ma'am, appreciate it. Anybody else in opposition that would like to speak? All right, so I will, uh, read the letters, um, that we, we received with concerns or opposition um, that we have in front of us. Uh, one was dated May eighth, two thousand nineteen. To the National Zoning Board, uh, we, Andrew and Peter Wasslock reside at residence at one fifty-six Amher Street, next door to the property at one fifty-eight Amher Street, in which Ally Byrd requested a variance allowing her to operate a dog daycare and dog boarding business. We are one hundred percent opposed to this request. The application glosses over the real issues involved, saying that there's a need for a dog care facilities, that it, that this is a great place with such a facility, and that if you grant the variance, it will allow the app- applicant to realize her gene. All of those reasons are nonsense and fail to satisfy the statutory requirements to obtain a variance. The property at one fifty-eight Amher Street is a small lot in a congested residential neighborhood. This location is inappropriate for a dog care facility. The sound of barking dogs and the smell of dog waste would make living in this neighborhood unbearable. How would we be able to enjoy our yard? We would be able to hear dogs twelve months a year, and it would make it what? We couldn't, make it that we couldn't open our windows in the summertime. How are they going to handle dog waste? They probably plan to leave a can outside, where people can drop their plastic bags. That can will cook in the sun and smell, and the smell will escape, and every time the lid is lifted. Dog urine can't be picked up, that urine will smell, snowbanks will be yellow in the wintertime, gross. Traffic and parking will be another issue. With only three to four parking spaces and two employees, people will have to park on the street in order to drop off their, drop off or retrieve their dogs. Dog care facilities which, with which we're familiar are either located in industrial zones or in a large lot, on a back road in Marmack or Amherst. There's a reason for that, no dog care facilities crammed into a small residential lot surrounded by homes. We are mindful that the property is currently operated under a variance for the printing company. However, that is, that use is quiet and cannot be compared to Ally Byrd's proposal. Allowing the dog daycare and boarding proposal would create a nuisance that would certainly diminish the value of our property. The applicant has also failed to show unnecessary hardship. There are no conditions to this property in, in itself, which make the dog care, dog daycare proposal a reasonable use. We trust that the board will deny the applicant's request, as it is not reasonable and fails to satisfy requirements for the variance. Very truly yours, Peter Wasslock. That's one fifty-six Amher Street. We also have, we have a letter, um, from NCC Business Solutions. I, I think we can just say that, uh, the applicant, that person was here and spoke to this letter. So, I, this will be in the record, but I won't read it. Then we have a letter from, um, from James Tamposy Junior. Dear zoning board members, the firm represents Corona Borealis LLC and its principal, Nancy C. Shabbitt, and is writing to you on their behalf. Corona is the owner of the property at one fifty-four Amher Street, which abuts the applicant's property. Ms. Shabbitt operates her accounting and bookkeeping practice, NCC Business Solutions. This letter is written in opposition to the applicant's request for a use variance at the abutting property at one fifty-eight Amher Street. The applicant has failed to effectively address the requirements of the five-part test. In furtherance thereof, we state as follows, numbers correspond to the five-part test in the application. One, granting the variance because it will be contrary to public interest. The character of the neighborhood is residential and quiet commercial, whose owners receive variances approving their uses. The ZBA correctly allowed these quiet commercial uses, including NCC Business Solutions and a printing business currently operating at one fifty-eight Amher Street, as a buffer between busy Amher Street and a purely residential use behind. The proposed dog ca- dog daycare business is not a quiet business. It will be noisy, smelly, and a threat to the welfare of the neighborhood. Dogs bark, and when one dog starts, they all start. The national five department trucks could buy several times per day with sirens, this will set off the dogs. Lightning storms will also set off the dogs, especially those who would be, would be boarding. These dogs will use the outdoors for bathroom services, and picked up or not, the smell will, in there will be there. Two, the proposed use will not observe the spirit of the ordinance. This is a residential zone, people want to enjoy their yards. The sound of barking dogs and the smell of dog waste will destroy the residential character of the neighborhood and will be, and will threaten the public health and welfare of everyone in the neighborhood. Ms. Shabbitt's office and conference room would be fifteen feet from the proposed dog run area. It would be impossible to conduct business where all the dogs are noise so close. Ms. Shabbitt also has an outdoor table and chairs in her side yard. This is where she and her staff often have lunch in the summer. This area is a mere feat from the applicant's proposed dog run. If a dog run were there, Ms. Shabbitt's outdoor area would become completely unusable. Three, substantial justice, sub- justice will not be done to the property owner. The current owner, current owner operates a printing business, which has been a good neighbor. The applicant, who would like to buy the property to fill her dream job, does not realize the negative impact this use would create and the substantial cost it would impact on this neighborhood. Dog care facilities may be needed, she says, but this is not the place for one. Any benefits to the applicant would be far outweighed by harm to the neighborhood. Four, the proposed use will diminish values to surrounding properties. Common sense tells us that the nuisance of barking dogs and dog smells would detract from the home's value. Attached are a few articles from the internet on the same. These articles are mostly a single dog next door. We can't control that, as people have pets. However, the impact of twenty dogs on a small lot, it's congest- in a congested neighborhood, would be overwhelming. There are no conditions with this property which will result in unnecessary hardship. This is a small property, completely unsuitable for dog daycare center. There are no conditions to the property in itself that would make the proposed use reasonable. The current printing business is a reasonable use. The applicant states that the new requested use is tied to a purchase of the property, which to us is a hardship, a critical approval. That is a personal hardship, not one related to the property. There are many issues that would also be brought before the planning board if this application were granted and go that far, just a few thoughts. A, the property currently has seven parking spaces, the applicant proposes to eliminate three, which would only leave four, one being a handicap restricted. If there are two employees, that would essentially leave one space, two if you include the handicap. Where, where all are, where, where are all the drop-offs and pickups going to park? If this lot is full, then they've been forced to park in the street, and most likely to use the neighbors', neighbors' driveways to turn around. B, if the board is an emplo- if the board, if they board, is an employee going to spend the night? Who's going to watch the dogs overnight? Is there sufficient living area for resident overnight person? C, dog waste cleanup, where are they gonna put it? Obviously, if it's pouring rain, nobody's going to get to it immediately. The property also utilizes, utilizes a drywall for drainage. So, the remnants of dog waste and urine would be sitting in that well, another source of odor and worse. If a dog escapes its owner's control, this happens all the time, will the dog run into Amher Street? What's the likelihood of a car, dog accident, or a res- or a resulting car, car accident? Based on the foregoing, we strongly believe that the requested variance is not reasonable. The property at one fifty-eight Amher Street is unsuitable location of the request. Granting the same would have devastating consequences for the neighborhood. Thank you for your assistance in denying this applicant's, applicant's request for a variance. Please call me if you have any questions, very truly yours, James Tamposy. Um, there was a reference to supplying us with articles, um, they supplied us with a bunch of, um, articles from the internet. And it all has to do with factors that can stick your home, impact a barking dog. So, uh, we all got those, uh, got those also. And again, um, just make sure that, that this is not in opposition, uh, no, there, there's another letter here from Century Twenty-One. Um, dear Mr. Tamposy, thank you for reaching out to me and opinion the impact of a dog kennel being placed at one fifty-eight Amher Street. I bel- I do believe it would negatively affect the property, affect the property values of the surrounding homes. I feel the potential buyers will not like the noise of kennel dogs barking in the day and, and the night. My feeling is odor from the kennel will also be an issue. I do wonder if parking would even be adequate for this location. Please feel free to call me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Rick Arnold of Con- Century Twenty-One Connoisseur Real Estate, three twenty-one Main Street, Nashua. All right, so that, that's everything that we have, right, Mr. Fark? Okay, so with that, um, Mrs. Byrd, you have five minutes to come back and talk to the points I've raised, or whatever you like to do. You have, you have five minutes, uh, to do that.
Let's see, uh, I will start off by letting everyone know that I was not actually able to visit the abutters before I even signed the purchase and sale because I was out of state, and the morning that I got into town, I went straight to the city and submitted my variance. So, I was actually in Utah for the two weeks leading up to this, and actually signed my PNS while out of state. So, I had no opportunity. Let's see. People keep saying that the area is a quiet zone, and perhaps there are areas that, that are quieter than others. But this is Amher Street, it's a main drag. It sees, according to a twenty-fifteen NH dot survey, twenty-four thousand cars passing along it each day. There's a gas station right across the street, in my opinion. To me, that is not a quiet residential area. I mean, to me, anything on a main drag isn't a quiet area at all. Another point, residential dogs that are barking in other houses are barking because they have not been trained to not bark. There are a million owners out there that are letting their dogs get away with this. I don't wanna be stuck in a house, working with these dogs, listening to them bark in my ear, going deaf all day. So, I'm not going to allow that, and I'm gonna be training them out of it. I've trained, I've been working with dogs for the last six months now, and their behaviors have already changed, the regulars. They, they get trained out of it. Um, as for fire trucks going by, if you're already listening to fire trucks. And curb appeal, curb appeal refers to the outside appearance, and ours will actually be impeccable. When I first went off to college, my first degree was interior design, and, not that that counts for much anymore, but I care how things look, and I care about appearance, and I care that things are clean, and they're orderly, and that they fit into the neighborhood. This is not going to be a dump. Getting back to la-la-la. I know everyone thinks that, you know, one dog sets off all the other dogs, but I just, I feel like they're the people that own dogs, and they're the people that work with dogs, and they approach dogs in two very different ways, and it's two very different mentalities. I am used to working with dogs in their communication style, and training them out of bad behaviors, and keeping them in line. And a lot of owners humanize their dogs and actually encourage them, without knowing it, to engage in these bad behaviors. So, these dogs that are barking at other dogs, these dogs that are barking at fire trucks, usually the owner goes over and picks them up and moves them. That's actually rewarding them for that behavior by touching them. So, it's things like that that I think the general public just doesn't understand in terms of cutting down the sound of barking. And yes, I would like to mention that earlier, I mentioned that dogs are not left overnight alone. Our open hours, um, are eight to six, and, but someone would be there overnight with the boarding dogs. And when I say that, you know, our capacity, according to industry best practices, would be approximately fifteen dogs, depending on their size, um, that's not necessarily referring to boarding, that's referring mostly to daycare. Um, I could see during the holidays and summer breaks, maybe more people need boarding. But on the, on the average basis, people are not, you know, there's not gonna be fifteen dogs in boarding overnight. Um, and these dogs, the reason why so many of them bark at, um, existing facilities is because they are put in a crate, in a kennel, with a bunch of other dogs that are also anxious and barking up a storm. And they get more stressed and more stressed. This is actually gonna be a crate-free facility unless we need to crate a dog, because they're more comfortable, they're happier, and they, they relax. I mean, right now, in the morning, when I get my dogs, we go outside, we play a bunch, they get super tuckered out, they come inside, and they fall asleep for about two to three hours. I actually watch Netflix. So, um, it's actually way less of an intense job than some people may think, so.
You have about a minute left.
Okay, thank you, I just, I'm ranting at this point. Um, I guess another point, too, is that everyone's afraid that there's gonna be so much noise outside. The dogs are not gonna be outside most of the day, they're gonna be outside for maybe fifteen, twenty-minute potty breaks, you know, to get their energy out, come back in, and then fall asleep or continue playing inside. But it's not, they'd probably be out for a total of an hour and a half to two hours each day in different chunks. So, it wouldn't be like they're outside, just having a blast, causing a general ruckus, so. That's, yep, question?
Yes, I do. The one point you have not touched on at all is the waste removal odor. How is that gonna be handled?
I did touch on that earlier.
In the begin- when you came back?
During my big talk, yeah.
Because that was a huge bone of contention.
No, I spoke to that.
So, what, could you just, yeah, we could just review, uh, you, you don't have to read exactly, kind of just.
Reiterate a little bit.
What you're gonna do with the waste.
So, let's see, all waste is removed of immediately after it is made. Someone made a comment about if it's raining, you're not gonna go out and pick it up. You're gonna be out there with the dogs picking it up, that's not an option to leave it there. Because if you leave it there, then the other dogs roll in it, eat it, cause a general mess, that I don't wanna be picking up either. So, all the wa- all fi- all physical waste that you can remove, you pick it up, bag it, make sure the bag is actually tied tight. A lot of people don't even secure the bags. And then you make sure that that's in a bin that has a solid closing top that secures. And then, I mean, it's like the, the diaper genie kind of sort of thing, I don't know if you guys have used that. You stick it in, and it seals shut, there's no odor coming out of that. And then, if you, you know, have your weekly removal, or however often, it's just, it doesn't accumulate. Um, and then as for the turfed area. And then as for the turfed area, I, as I mentioned before, I had that in Boston. I used that for my own personal use, and it worked wonders. We had two dogs, and then we were always fostering one or two other dogs. So up to four dogs using this patio, and it was a small space, and we would just hose it, we'd obviously pick up the physical waste, and then the rest of it, you can hose down into the other layers, and it just gets absorbed into the, into the ground. And then there's deodorizers and bacteria, bacteria killers that you can sprinkle on top of it. So it's, there's a whole industry focused on, you know, outdoor pet space and how to keep that clean and bacteria-free and less smelly.
Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
No, I was just wanting to, I heard all the comments, and I didn't hear you touch back on that, and so I wanted to make sure that it did get touched back on.
Yes, yeah, yep. And, yeah, I think that's, that's all I had on the waste management part.
Any other questions? Just to clarify, just help me out with the number of dogs. I'm looking specifically what you're thinking you're going to have for dogs during the day. I know you mentioned about the industry standard says about fifteen. Is that including or excluding the boarding, the boarded dogs?
So that would hopefully be including the boarding dogs because I, what we're searching for is a small enough operation that one to two people can manage it. And that means not overdoing the number of dogs. And so I would like to leave it a little flexible because when Christmas hits and the holidays hit, there's a ton of people for boarding that need it, but the daycare dogs, you know, the regulars, the people who still need someone to watch their dog while they're at work, they still need care, too. So on an average basis, I'd probably like to be taking in ten to fifteen for daycare, or maybe I take in ten for daycare but leave five, you know, reserved. I wouldn't even leave five reserved for boarding. I'd leave like three reserved for boarding. But it ebbs and flows, but there's definitely peaks where boarding is soaring, which is mostly summer and the holidays.
Right, so I don't know how this board is, you know, we haven't deliberated. That's the other part of tonight's meeting. If we end up with a discussion about number of dogs, where would you say would be the maximum number of dogs that you would have? So sometimes what happens is during discussion, we may get to the point where, just like you saw earlier today, where, where somebody requested nine and we said five. And you're not requesting a number of dogs, but if that were to become a sticking point or point of discussion, I'd like to know where you're at and what you would expect or what you need to have for max, what you think your maximum dogs would be there combined with the, with the, with the day and the boarding. What would that total number be?
Twenty.
Twenty.
I'd say twenty.
Okay, all right.
Because anything above that, I mean, that's already, that's already full, and that's already if dogs are on the smaller size. Because, you know, I, I watch dogs that are this big, and I watch dogs that are this big, so they take up quite a different amount of space. But I'd say twenty is probably the cap because that would definitely require at least two staff, and I, I don't want to go over that, and it, it would be too much for the space.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. Per our bylaws, those in opposition, one person and one person only can come up and speak. If those in opposition need to take a few minutes to decide who's going to come up and what you want to say, we can, we can take a break for five minutes. Or if somebody already is, already been pre-elected to come up, that's fine. Does anybody, do you need to discuss that?
Great.
Do you want to take five minutes? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess so that those in opposition can decide who's going to speak. All right, we'll recess for five minutes. Excuse me. Excuse me, we're going to call the meeting back to order now.
Where's your gavel?
Yeah, I know.
That's a good time for a gavel.
I have one I can bring for you.
Okay. All right, I'm calling the meeting back to order, and we're going to hear from the designated for the opposition. Could you just give us your name and address, please, again?
My name is Tim Hogan, 29 Sullivan Street. I kind of took some notes from everyone else that talked, so I'm just going to bring up things that everyone else had mentioned. We just wanted to, to talk about them again. The solid waste concern, our big concern or question is, is she planning on using the typical trash pickup in the, the big blue bins that we all have for trash? Because those are definitely not airtight. Or is she intending on having some sort of commercial pickup service that's dog-specific? I think that would be an important thing to know as far as the smell is concerned. With the soft waste or the urine, her butter, so that she had to put in a drainage well to address concerns of runoff in the area, and her concern is whether or not the water that's rinsed down to flush the urine ends up running into her drainage. I know she addressed that she puts down chemicals and that's supposed to take care of it. The concern would be whether it does or doesn't actually take care of that. And now the sewer grate is in her yard and directing the smell basically towards her property. Nine Bristol Street apparently sent in an email but was not received. Eleven Bristol Street, who spoke, who's here right now, he said, you guys mentioned that you did not receive the email that he sent in, so just a little bit of a concern that, however, those didn't get in. Oh, the only people that spoke in for this are the people that have a financial benefit for it. I've used Ace Printing, my wife's used Ace Printing, my father's used Ace Printing. Great guy, we support his business. He was a great neighbor. You know, we're sorry that printing stuff went away, but we just can't support this because, because we like him. As far as a lot of the plans, being that she's not solid on some of the plans and not knowing some of the zoning issues that are coming up, it kind of makes us nervous that six months training doing something, not being solid on the fence height, not being solid on the fence being in the intersection. That street is difficult turning into and out of any ways, the speed on Amher Street in that particular location, the traffic necks down from two lanes to one, and it turns into a bit of a drag race sometimes. And then if you're trying to turn right onto any of those roads, which would be Norfolk, would be the second or third one to do that, it's a tight area, and some of the people that lived on that street mentioned that over the years they've been there, there have been at least three accidents. One of the guys said, friends of his on motorcycles have been in accidents right there. So it's, it's kind of a high-risk intersection as it is to put more traffic there, and then to put, I mean, apparently there's zoning rules, you can't put a fence there, but just kind of not really addressing or being concerned with things like that is concerning to all of us. A lot of the people on that street tend to park in the street. The, the people that own the homes there, some of them, they just, they tend to park. Some of the driveways are smaller, so they're on the street as it is, and then to put a business there that's now putting more people on the street would be a concern. And then obviously, the traffic of twenty dogs would be forty trips per day. It's a lot of area, a lot of traffic in that area that's just, it's, it's not set up or meant for it. Speed of the cars on Amher Street, I addressed that, and we've all used Ace Printing, so I mean, we, we support him, but we just can't support this.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
I, I do appreciate the, the presentation from the applicant. I am, you know, confident that she certainly appears to understand her business and understand how do we take care of dogs, you know, how to train dogs. And I do think that the intent would be to run an establishment professionally and competently. That said, I, I, I don't think this is the right site for that type of business or for a business of that intensity, for, for a couple of reasons, but one, for many of them that were raised. The variances that were granted in the past for this property strike me as reasonable. It was a residentially zoned property in obviously an area that's somewhat transitional. A professional office, printing establishment, relatively low-impact businesses, and, and the concept of those businesses being a buffer from Amher Street to the residential area, I can appreciate. I also appreciate that the property owner has been struggling, and I'm not sure why, but the property owner has been struggling to sell this property, so that's, that's something I felt in hurt. But end of the day, it's a, it's a small quarter-acre lot. I think from what we heard earlier, there's a real challenge in trying to accommodate the parking that would be necessary for this business as well as providing some sort of outdoor area and meeting those requirements. You know, so while I do think that the intent would be to manage this as well as possible, I think it'd be too challenging to do that on this particular property, and for those reasons, I couldn't support it.
You know, I, I too am, present tense, very impressed by Ms. Byrd's, I don't want to say presentation, that's almost too shallow, her preparation and her passion for this business, and I think it is a growing business. I mean, all these young people I work with are passionate about their pets, their dogs, and, you know, I, I think it's, it is a need, you know, a growing need. I think it's a, it's a, it's actually a good business plan. But, you know, a use variance runs with the land and not the person, and I remember contemplating Mr. Brodor's, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, you know, his printing business, and, and I, at first, and I'm going back to that many years, at first I thought, well, is this going to be this noisy business that's going to disrupt the neighborhood? And he was saying how, first of all, I had every confidence in him as a person to run a tight ship as a business, which he's demonstrated over the years. But also, I thought, God forbid, what happened, what happens if something happened to him and another printing, you know, another owner came along for a printing business? And I thought, chances are, it's, it'll still be a good fit in the neighborhood because the business is, is like really indoors. It's not like the person's going to put a printing press on the front lawn on a nice day and disturb the neighbors. You know, it just seemed like it would run well. And for right next door to this business, I thought, God forbid, what happens if something happens to Ms. Shabbat? You know, I, I think with her, with that type of business, it would still be a decent fit in the neighborhood. If, if this were approved and the dog business are up and running, I, I actually think it would be a, a well-run, tight ship, but God forbid, what happens, what happens if something happened to Ms. Byrd and somebody else came in? I think it could be a huge problem. And with the use variance running with the land and not with the person, I, I struggle to find support. I'd say for the, for the reasons that Mr. Mankara touched on, it's, it would be an intensive and noisy use that would have to be very well-controlled to be good, and I, I don't have confidence that folks not as well-prepared as Ms. Byrd could, could do that. And, and it runs with the land, and that's why I'm struggling to find support for this particular business. Not at all for Ms. Byrd, but for this business at this location.
Okay, then. Well, I don't see this so much residential because of Amher Street. I see it for what it is, and I drive this section pretty much daily. It's busy. You have an auto body shop there. That's not quiet at all. And so I understand the logic behind wanting this. I understand having boarding or animals in a residential... I understand having boarding or animals in a residential neighborhood because Clark Veterinary Services is on Webster Street. And that is extremely residential. I mean, there's no, no other business there. And the veterinary services up back, the house that is right in front of it, doesn't hear the dogs or whatever. And when I used to bring my dogs there, when you go in, you would hear the dogs. So I would hear the noise on the inside but not hear it on the outside. So, and I have two dogs that, you know, like to bark if a leaf blows sometimes. You know, it's what they do. Well, one's a toy Yorkie. I mean, she's going to bark. And so I understand all of that. I wish that I could make two decisions. One would be for Ally and one would be for the neighbors, but that isn't going to happen. So in spite of the fact that this young woman has presented an amazing plan that she sounds completely qualified and really understands and knows her business, my fear, my apprehension is mostly around the waste products and the drainage. And while I understand that would be a planning board issue and it's not a zoning issue, that seems to be where my concerns lie because dogs are dogs and they have to do what they have to do. But there's no place for it to go. And even though she said there would be a commercial pickup, which would alleviate the blue can issue, I still have extreme reservations to 20 dogs. I just think the place might be too small. And so I struggle to find support, as I quote Mr. Carrier.
I'm, I'm going to echo exactly what you said. It's very rare that we have an applicant come that is so prepared that's not a, an attorney. So compliments to Mrs. Byrd. I have every confidence that she could run a business no matter where, where it was. You know, along the other things that we've mentioned, I mean, there are some challenges that I think are inherently present in this particular property because of its location. Though the location is beneficial in a lot of ways, I think it's also detrimental in some other ways. So I, I have no, I, I don't doubt that, that we can make the inside work. I, I think it's that transition with what's going on, on the outside. And I believe her when she says that the animals are not going to be outside that much. I guess I'm not focusing on just the barking or whatever. I'm kind of looking at it as, as the total package. And, and it just doesn't seem to fit for, for a bunch of reasons for me, unfortunately. And I, I think there's some other challenges that, that would have to come back in front of us if, if they were, like we were talking about fencing, one won't belabor that, but that's just kind of, you know, we, we all know that the, that the fencing is going to be six feet unless there's another variance. So, you know, that may be a critical part of this plan, but getting that may be a challenge in itself because where we want to locate that, I, I just really can't see an eight-foot fence there. I mean, I could see it for some reason, for another reason, maybe on the backline property. Not that, I'm not saying that's where the, the dogs should go, for another reason, for privacy, because of the topography. That could, I could see that, but not kind of upfront. And that may be important, that may be an important feature to have. I have no doubt that if there was some concerns about drainage and all that, that that would be taken care of. So this artificial turf, I, I think that, that, that could be managed or engineered to a point. But, you know, again, as Mr. Carrier stated, you know, the variance goes with the, with the, with the, with the use and not with the person. So that's where I'm struggling, for the right reason or not, that's where I really struggle with this here. So, so that's part of my struggle here. So I, I guess it's, the total package is kind of, the totality of it, of the impact is kind of, I'm having a time supporting that. And on the other side too, I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, that we've, we all have struggles, you know, there's a lot of people that have struggles and, you know, trying to sell property, get property rented. But I don't, I, I don't think this property is so unique that something else couldn't be there. I, I just think that, again, maybe, you know, again, it's, you know, there could be some factors that are really limiting that. But I don't think that it's to the point where only a dog daycare can go in this location. I, I still think that there's some other opportunities. And unfortunately, those opportunities haven't been presented yet. So, and again, we can't take financial, we can't take financial consideration for anything that's going on. It's unfortunate, but unfortunately, we can't, you know, use that as a, a reason to be for or against an application. So, so I guess what I'm saying is that I don't really, I don't, I support Mrs. Byrd. I, I just can't support this application for this location. Mr. Carrier?
Just one thing I wanted to kind of tag on to what you said is, you know, this property, I think, could support many businesses like doctor's office, you know, accountants, chiropractic, other things you see on Amherst Street. I think many of those sorts of businesses carry on in a fairly quiet fashion where clients come and go, much like a homeowner would come and go. But I'm, I'm feeling, you know, that the dog business is, you know, not necessarily, you know, I'm saying if it were not under tight control, is, is to me would likely, even with much fewer dogs than 20, could, could likely be very, very noisy and problematic to the neighbors and not, not in spirit. So I just wanted to kind of touch more upon that there are quite a few businesses that I think this property does support, but, but not, not the dog business. I mean, dog daycare business. Well, I think we're, we're seeing four people not in support. I mean, I could hazard a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Carrier.
So I'll make a motion on behalf of Ally Byrd and Zumiez LLC. And the address is 158 Amherst Street. And this motion is to deny the request for a use variance to allow a dog daycare and boarding business. I, I make a motion to deny because I believe this board finds that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. I think the board finds that there are probably plenty of other businesses that could be supported in this RA zoned piece of property. I think this board is concerned with the overall activity that a dog daycare and boarding business would bring, not necessarily by this applicant, but by the business in general with other owners in the future. I think that the board finds that a dog daycare and boarding business is not with, at, at 158 Amherst Street, is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds that it, it could devalue properties and disturb the existing businesses next door as well as the homeowners quite nearby. And so this sort of use is contrary to public interest and substantial justice is not served, so I make a motion to deny.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mankara. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of denying the application? It's four to nothing. Ma'am, unfortunately, the application's been denied. There is a 30-day wino of appeal, so just be aware of that. Okay? Thank you for coming. We still have business to conduct, so we just asked you if you want to have a conversation. Feel free to step out in the hallway. Thank you very much. Okay, we have some meeting minutes.
From April 9th and April 23rd.
Want to give it, just a second, let the clear the room?
Got changes?
I didn't see, I didn't see any changes to the April 9th or April 23rd meeting minutes myself. I thought they were good as written.
I agree.
Can we ask, excuse me, folks?
Folks.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Hey, folks, could you?
Excuse me, ma'am? 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 Excuse me. Excuse me.
She doesn't hear. You want me to yell?
All right, so two of us have no changes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So we were saying that neither of us have any changes to the April 9th or April 23rd minutes? Meeting minutes?
So there's no, no changes. Do you see anything, Ms. McKay?
No.
So I'll make a motion to approve the April 9th and April 23rd meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Second by Mr. Mankara. Any discussion? All in favor? You in favor? Yes, four. Okay.
Did we have an agenda?
There is a, there should be one in your, in your desk. There's five cases.
Why am I missing it? I probably mistook it.
Byrd Drive, yeah, probably for the one for tonight.
I don't see any regional impact, but.
Where's Penob Scott Road?
Here we go.
Ward five.
Ward five, okay. It doesn't seem to be near the border. I don't think, I don't see any. I don't see any regional impact from the agenda for.
There's no regional impact.
I would agree.
Okay.
So that's two for no regional.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Anybody second that? Ms. McKay? All in favor of adjourned? Okay, we're adjourned at 10:52. Thank you.